Which one you mean the big force is one of the?
Yeah.
So. And we're going to the perfect place because the perfect place for a lot of things. You know, they're younger.
Yeah.
They go to that.
Oh.
Well, we pull it up on that. Just make sure if I can see.
Yeah.
Perfect. Yeah, they they held it for so long, it blows my mind because the value of that land is almost a million dollars. And then over here, I'm gonna take the South March figure, it's a double monument. Forward. Different than it is. Time or? What do you say? This one. About sixty eight. Well, I don't know if I got it. Are we talking about the same one? It's up there where Ray comes into his problems. It's all over. Yeah, that's like shit. Yeah. Obviously, we have. I mean, the drink. Yeah. If I keep it like. That's what. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I remember. It's the. Yeah. Right with this rack. Even if what? I was. Because then you know, you get twenty fifty dollars in there. And the way also. This is several years. I remember the. Our colleague, he gave a $50 million in batteries. Where the humans. The market, but it's good. Problem. Or. They didn't think about the sales tax. We need it. All of them. So first thing I was. But but just. Grand nature. Very. It is. That's. Really. Right. Or. Eight. The. I'm going sixty. Yeah. 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 Really hard to find this. Yeah. It would. Yeah. Five. Yeah. On the. It could be back to. Yeah. So. That's the. Sure. That was. We. Break out. We're not here. Well, seeing. On the. That's. That. It's. I'm a little bit. Yeah, we. All. Oh. You're. Well, what you spent the year. Park. One part. I'm above the. There's so. Aspects look. That. The book. I don't know. Hmm. I must say that. He. Yeah. Oh. So. Oh. For a while. I'm gonna. Yeah. But that's. I. First. Solid. Yes. And more. I believe that was an issue. So. It's right. But it makes a lot. What that? What that's. I'll have to talk. Thank you. Sure to drive to a. So. Oh. But. It's next. All of the. Yeah. Right on. Thank you. Sir. I was. I. See. Good seeing you. I am. I've. Same. I am. I've. Thinking of you on my way over. I'm with my brothers. Whatever. They were talking about. How to. How to incorporate around. So. And then there was a big thing about. Scouts. Scouts getting reclassed. Scouts. Direct training. How to. It's. Our. Our talent. Let up. My guys. Yeah, I mean, if I went back today, because I was. Always. Yeah. Well, that's. Yeah. Okay. Oh. I told you. To. Yeah. I didn't. That's. One. That. I. I don't. Yeah. Well. Good. Eighty seconds. I think. Really weed out. Really that way. But I just. I've. Since I've. Really. Before. Army. Or. Part of the. I wasn't part of. I wasn't. I wasn't part of. True. But. I thought. Something. It's like. I don't know. It's. I don't. It's like. Oh, yes, sir. Find. That doesn't. Whatever. Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. You have any models? You'll take three. One of those. I'll. Three. Actually, I was part of. Who's on Raleigh? I don't think that's. I think. Right. Um. They. That's. First. Also. Almost. That. That's here. Yeah. Yeah. Good to see. That's. I. Right here. What's the? For. I call sleeps. I call sleeps. Yeah. Oh, sure. Over right there. It's. Right. So. Now. Say again? There. Question. It is. Oh, definitely. Okay. Just wondering, like, you know. Sure. Sure. You think there's gonna be a. So here. Okay. Your. Doesn't mean that's more. Out here. Here. Well, for this specific activity. We have. We've been set aside one for a year, so it's been through. So that's. That's where it comes. It's not necessarily just one that is a factor. We've been setting plenty of sites in anticipation of. Things. Right. You said. You guys are really. Sir. Our. Right. What it is. But also. You guys are safe. Sir. That's. All right. Not a lot. Yeah. Yeah. Um. Oh. Um. I was. Yes. Good. Up. And without compensation. Up there. Stay. First. So. I. Off. That's. Pretty sharp. Yeah. But. I'm. Sorry. Okay. Open it. These. Are. After. Did I know? Get this more. Everybody. Yeah. That's. Oh. It's. Yeah. Yeah. Have you came in hot, man? Oh, wow.
I just did, you know.
You keep messing with. My chair. I'm gonna put a note on it says, if you don't like the height and the recline of this chair.
Use another.
Use. Move it. This is Kim's chair. I can be. You wanna be higher, so you're taller than I am?
This one. This one's mine. It's nice and stiff.
Oh, I'm like. Let me have. Yes. These poor guys have come in through this year.
Yeah, they probably enjoyed this better than.
Right. We just are. Right. It's. It. That. Yeah.
I. What I care about is that we have stuff on the record today that were. Whatever is said is fine.
Okay.
On time. It's in the minutes.
Yeah. Okay. All right, you ready?
Yeah.
All right, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the village council work session meeting Thursday, March twenty eighth to order. I showed the time at nine oh four. Uh, for those of you listening in YouTube land, I guess we, uh, don't have a connection. We're live stream right now, so unfortunately, we've been working on it, but we need to proceed with the meeting, so. Uh, but that will get out eventually, right? All of the meeting. Thank you, Austin.
Following the meeting, I'll be able to post it online.
Um, considering allowing remote participation is next up. Um, is Bob coming today?
No.
It will he be participating?
No.
Okay, so no need to do that. Um. Next up, we have adoption of the previous minutes. Anyone? A jo- I'm sorry, adoption of the agenda.
Um, so I need to add under new business number five, discussion of House Bill five, proposed de-annexing of nine hundred and seventy-three acres from the heart of the town of Summerfield, North Carolina. And that's all I have.
Looks like that's been included. Anyone else? All right, I'll need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I moved.
Further discussion. Holes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Um, next up, we're adoption of the previous minutes. Anyone have any concerns, questions?
Nope.
And we'll move that to the consent agenda. Or just adopt them now.
So I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the minutes from the three twelve twenty-four budget work session, the three twelve twenty-four regular meeting, the three twenty-six twenty-four joint meeting with Parks, Rec and Greenway Board as presented.
Further discussion? Holes in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have presentations. Um. The good news is we're doing you guys first, so you can get out of here. Sorry for this, but, um, we're follow-up presentation from Union County Sheriff's Office. Uh, I'm not sure who's going to be speaking first or. And then just make, I think the speaker is on, so.
So, good morning, Mr. Mayor, Manager Amos, Council Members. I'm Tony Endwood. I'm the Chief Deputy of Operations for the Union County Sheriff's Office, and I know that Lieutenant May has been here previously and spoken with you. He has another commitment this morning, so unfortunately, you're stuck with me. Um, but also Captain Wes Tyson is here. He's our operations captain and also Lieutenant Sean Mayhew. Uh, Lieutenant Mayhew is essentially the immediate supervisor for those contract deputies who were assigned to the Village of Marvin, as well as our other contract towns. And then Captain Tyson oversees all of those contract, uh, towns, as well as our patrol operations and many other specialty units within the agency. So that's sort of a breakdown of how we're set up, you know, as a structure, as as an organizational, uh, uh, agency. So what we've done, I know there was some questions that were raised at the last meeting about staffing and is there a need for more personnel? One of the things we've done, uh, with other towns in the past is present sort of what I like to call an interview report card. We kind of give you some statistics and let you guys sort of digest that and make some decisions amongst yourselves about, do we really need additional resources? Um, so part of it is just a very quick overview of our stats, something that we're very proud of as a law enforcement agency, which is one of the many reasons that makes this county such a great community, is that we believe our numbers are very, uh, attractive from a law enforcement standpoint. We have a very low crime rate comparatively speaking, when you deal with a community of nearly two hundred and fifty or thousand so people. So do you have the ability, Mr. Yauta, to advance the slides or or do I have that? Okay. We're just having some.
The.
There we go. Okay, starting with it with our patrol, um. Zones, essentially, the county is geographically divided into four primary response zones. The Village of Marvin obviously is embedded within the larger zone four area. Um, it's obviously one of our busiest zones just by by virtue of having the highest density population here. There are traffic issues, there are a lot of concerns, but the reason that's important is that when there is not a dedicated Marvin deputy on duty, if there's a call for service, that will most likely be answered by one of the zone four cars. Most of the time, we have three zone cars on all of our patrol cars as assigned to zone four. So that's how that would work. If you go to the next slide, please. Um, what this shows is going back to twenty ten and up to twenty-three, those, uh, those columns, if you will, if you look at twenty twenty-three, um, the orange in particular shows one hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and fourteen self-initiated calls. That is our bread and butter as a law enforcement agency. When we show self-initiated events, those are your, uh, traffic stops, those are your preventive patrols, those are officers being proactive in the community, and we believe, and and historically, it would show that that is what is a huge deterrent for crime, is taking those proactive steps. It's something that the sheriff in this county has, it's one of his philosophies, is we are very proactive, we have proactive units dedicated to certain tasks, and it works, and I think those numbers will show that. You'll see those numbers are pretty steady, uh, countywide, one hundred nineteen thousand, you know, compared to just a little more than that in twenty twenty-two, but then in the blue column, you'll see the thirty-eight thousand, two forty-six. Those are calls for service that were essentially dispatched, nine-one-one calls, you know, accidents, whatever it may be, that's countywide, those are people calling nine-one-one and communications, sending a car to answer that particular call. But collectively, you see there's slightly an increase, uh, as it compares to our population of of just under two hundred and fifty-five thousand.
I I I know we attribute a lot of things to, you know, COVID in twenty twenty.
Sure.
I I do see, you know, kind of a jump and and a new baseline there in twenty twenty. Now, there wasn't a lot of interaction or things going on at that time. Is is that attributable in any way to, you know, COVID responses or or?
It very much so. Uh, twenty twenty as well as twenty-one, because it carried over, but largely, a lot of those numbers, um, the self-initiated numbers were attributed to some of our school resource officers not being in school. So they're out as force multipliers, working in assisting patrol squads, so they're also out answering calls, doing a lot of proactive police work, so you're gonna have spikes in those numbers. Those numbers, even twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one are sort of anomalies. And I would more or less not consider them as actual, you know, decision, uh, for for moving forward, how you might want to calculate that into a crime trend or.
We had more feet on the street because they weren't in the schools.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense.
A hundred percent. Yes, sir.
Self-initiated.
Absolute. Can you please hit the next slide? So the first dispatch, first to arrive, these are, you know, the time the call comes in, the time it's dispatched, these are average, uh, times of response countywide. One of the things we try to to do is obviously, you know, improve that every year, is if you're that person waiting for that officer to arrive and you're the one who truly has that emergency need, ten minutes and ten and a half minutes, essentially, it seems like an eternity. If you're waiting for that officer and you truly need help to get there, but that's an average call from what we would call a hot call, meaning a crime in progress, you drop everything and we run lights and siren, we get there versus the call is is not a high priority call, somebody just needs an accident report taken or they need a larceny report, and if they're on another call, it might take them twenty-five minutes. And if they're on another call, it might take them twenty-five minutes sometimes. It just depends on, you know, what's going on. Traffic is a huge factor in those response times as well, as we all deal with that, living in this community. So we have to navigate those roads as well, but that ten point four five is something we're proud of. I think the national average is probably in the thirteen range, so we try to stay below that.
You know, because a lot of times they're false alarms too, but how do you determine or do you determine is this an in-progress break-in or is it?
If it's reported by an alarm company or if it's a third-party caller?
Right, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, do you place a higher priority on some if it's a, if it's the security guard calling or if it's actually a person calling? It's so many.
Sure. A lot of it's based on call history. Is this particular alarm? Is it is it subject to the wind causing it to go off? Or is it truly an intrusion alarm that looks like there may actually be a forced entry into the residence? Has, has the alarm company made contact with the key holder? There's a lot of factors that are that are sort of considered. Most of the time, unless the officer is somewhat familiar with that place or that business or residence, they're usually gonna respond to that call anyway, even though sometimes they'll say you can disregard that call because we've made contact. Everybody said it was fine. We still may ride by just to make sure everything's okay.
Yes, sir. Question, are these numbers available like to Marvin's specific zone?
Yes.
Because I recall when we first engaged with the Sheriff's Department and Sheriff Kathy, this might be fifteen years ago or so. You know, one of our concerns before we we got some officers ourself, our response times, if I recall correctly, were sometimes up in the twenty to twenty-five minute range. So seeing this, you know, i- is a testament to, you know, the improvements that Union County, at least, you know, us at on the edges of the county have have seen dramatic improvements, but I would be interested to see if we have those numbers specific to the to the Marvin zone.
Yes, sir. I think there may be a specific slide because as when we finish the countywide, we're gonna move into Marvin specific here in just a minute, which I think may have that answer for you about the response time specific to Marvin cars. So but that that number itself that you have to factor in, we have a community or county of six hundred and forty-three square miles. There's some large geographical areas. So sometimes it just takes a little while to drive a distance to respond to a call.
Yeah.
But if you could, Mr. Yau, please, next slide is these are our crash statistics. These are, you know, unfortunately, increasing, but with more cars on the road, that's pretty normal. And the expectation is you're gonna see an increase in crashes for a number of factors. A lot of that is distracted driving, people following too closely, aggressive drivers, a number of things that could be contributing factors, but countywide crashes, you see on that blue column, there were sixty-five hundred of those in the county. The Sheriff's Office, if you see in the orange next to that, was two thousand and sixty-seven. Those were investigated by our agency, which of the total crashes was about thirty-one, almost thirty-two percent of total crashes. Now, I think one of the things to note about that is the Sheriff's Office is not required to answer those calls and respond to traffic crashes on state-maintained highways. That is the responsibility of the Highway Patrol. But we have done that. Sheriff Kathy, being a retired state trooper, he's he's very committed and to serving this community. We do know that traffic crashes tie up and it's a major inconvenience for motorists when they're waiting what seems like indefinitely for an officer to come on scene. If it's not an accident with injuries, that is, you just need a report. If it's out of the roadway, but they're still having to wait and and we know traffic is gonna back up because people are gonna stop and look. So we try to provide that service so that we can keep traffic moving and let the community know we're trying to do everything we can to be a full-service law enforcement agency. So, but that is a, that's a big consideration for our agency or crashes. If you could, the next one. I'll look at some of the investigations. If you would go to the next one after that. This is where we like to sort of brag a little bit on the on the violent crimes per one hundred thousand. These are all national statistics. If you go over to twenty, that we don't have the twenty-three numbers as of yet. They're not, they haven't been released by the FBI, but the latest statistics we have are twenty twenty-two. You can see on the nationwide average was three hundred and eighty point seven per one hundred thousand individuals. And then the statewide average was even higher than that at four oh five. Union County was at forty-seven. That is a significant number that shows we are a safe community by and large. When you when you compare us with a lot of larger communities, this county is very safe. If you would, the next one, please. Property crimes, you'll see in twenty twenty-two, those numbers have gone up a little bit from the previous year in twenty-one as it relates to Union County, six oh seven. But we're still well below both the state and national average. A lot of those property crimes that we do see are largely vehicle break-ins. Those, when they happen, a lot of the criminals will target subdivisions and they may hit twenty to thirty in a night. And what they're looking for are targets of opportunity. They'll pull door handles most of the time if a door is unlocked. And if there's anything at all of any value, they're gonna take it. Well, that's a victim. So that's one one number. And if they hit the street, it's like a trick-or-treater. They go door to door to door. And if there's any car in the driveway accessible, they're gonna pull the handle. If it's unlocked, they're gonna go in it. So that's where some of those numbers are are gonna, you know, show an increase. We have a pretty high success rate at identifying those offenders and bringing accountability to them. But again, those numbers are still very attractive when you consider where we stand on both the state and the national average. If you would, the next one, please. Okay, our schools. You can see just by those numbers, those are color-coded by elementary, middle, and high school. You'll see it looks like, wow, in twenty twenty-three, there was a lot more incidents in the schools and that's true to a degree. Another factor to consider in that is we have continued, the Board of County Commissioners has continued to provide funding for additional school resource officers. Their goal being to eventually have a one-to-one ratio for an officer within every public school in Union County. There's fifty-three public schools. I think we're now six short from having an officer assigned in the county, that is, within every public school, elementary, middle, and high school. School safety is one of our biggest, you know, priorities in this county. So having those officers dedicated to those schools, you're gonna see an increase in incident reports. Any crime that is reported, regardless of how serious or how minor, if it's a criminal matter and it's reported to that officer, we're gonna do a report on it. So that's why you see some of those numbers increasing a little bit, but you also see the elementary range increasing.
So what what typically, I mean, it's an elementary school, right?
Right.
These are little kids. So what kind of crimes, I mean, it seems to be, you know, more in the elementary schools. So what kind of crimes go on? I would figure like in high school.
Phones. Phones are a factor.
I mean.
Phones, telephones are driving a lot of the social media, cyberbullying, threats, school threats. You know, there's, there's a lot of that behavior, but also on top of that, there's a lot of vapes, vape pens, THC gummies is showing up in the elementary schools.
Really?
That's unfortunately.
That is a little bit concerning as a parent.
Yes.
You know, I would certainly would think that the high school, middle school, high school, as the kids get older and they're a little more independent, would be more inclined to do things, you know, on their own. But elementary schools with with THC and stuff like that.
It's out there.
It's kind of, that is a little bit alarming to me. I just, and then, and that is a, that's more of a cultural thing.
It is.
You know, it's it's a parental thing, you know, if your child is doing that kind of thing. So, yeah, I wouldn't say that's a reflection on your department. I would say that's a huge reflection on our responsibility as parents in this world that our children are into that kind of activity at that age.
Absolutely.
I I know that there's also been a lot of discussion about, you know, the reporting of incidents in schools and things like that, you know? It it used to be that a lot of things were more handled internally.
Right.
You know, whereas there's been a lot of pressure, make sure that it gets recorded, make sure that it gets reported. I- is that part of what we're seeing here too in your?
Well, we don't, we don't do an incident report if it's something that's like a school policy or a violation of of school rules or if it's school discipline. But if it's a, if there's an underlying crime associated with that, we will do a report on that. And it doesn't mean that that child or that young adult is gonna face a criminal charge or a juvenile petition. They might. But we at least have documentation. So if there's a history or a pattern that's, you know, developed from that that requires, you know, juvenile justice or somebody else getting involved in that, that's the reason we want to have a documentation of that.
And and would you say that that pressure to create that kind of documentation has has come more to the forefront in the last couple of years?
I think it is. I think it's just accountability. We have to be, you know, we have to be mindful that we don't just overlook it and say, ah, it was just a one-time thing. We just, at least there's a, there's a incident report that's, you know, that's in our archives for that situation. Well, I think too, though, going back to what I said earlier, the staffing of that one-to-one, that's been the focal point. Because we've, we have over the last several years, we've had a dedicated school resource officer in every high school. Then we focused on middle. We've had those for years and the emphasis has been on staffing those elementary schools. So those are the ones that still don't have a one-to-one in all of them, but we're working to do that. It costs a lot of money to staff each of these deputies every year, but we're working in that direction with our Board of Commissioners. If you could go to the next one, please. Drug-related arrests, that goes hand in hand with some of the THC stuff, but our our drug, our narcotics investigative Bureau spends a lot of time doing some. We're not necessarily focusing on the low-level drug crimes anymore. We're focusing on the dangerous drugs and those I would, you know, the biggest issue is the fentanyl. The meth is making a strong comeback. Cocaine's making a strong comeback, but those deadly drugs that are killing people that are not just here but across the country, the the fentanyl overdoses and the fentanyl suppliers, we're not targeting for arrest. The users per se, but more the the traffickers, those that are making profit off of other people's demise. So they're very proactive. We partner with a lot of our federal agencies and going after some of these high-level offenders and we've had great success. But four thirty-one, that's about average of where they've tracked for the last couple of years.
So what was the spike in seventeen and eighteen in that? Is that just that you were focusing more on?
There was, that was the time period when the opioid epidemic was really coming to the forefront. And it was, and it's amazing how rapidly that it is, it is completely evolved into just primarily fentanyl now. And that was when it was pills and there was so much of it out here. And and we were seeing, you know, we were really hitting those areas hard with a lot of interdiction-type activity with canines in traffic stops, you know, doing canine alerts on vehicles and searches and subsequent seizures and arrests. But that was a period of time we were seeing that real epidemic hit this area as well.
Are you gonna address any like the candy levels or is there an issue here?
It's becoming an issue. It's not necessarily an issue yet. Thankfully, within the county, not so much. Now, I'm not gonna say there's not, you know, an area of our county that doesn't have an issue with that, maybe in Monroe specifically. And we assist them and we're doing some things behind the scenes to address that now. We'd like, we like to be out in front of those things instead of trying to react later and catch up to it, but we're working on that. If you could, the last slide before we talk specifically about Marvin is these are our positions, just to show how the, as the population in the orange line has has trended upwards. You know, at or near two hundred and fifty thousand, or maybe just slightly above that now, our staffing has has tracked somewhat consistent with that. We're about three hundred and sixty-three total agency positions. Most of those are sworn positions, but we had, we do have detention officers that are non-sworn, that are part of that three sixty-three civilian staff otherwise. But we we've tried to trend proportionately with the population growth with our number of positions that we add each year. If you would now, okay, these are our, if you would, the next slide, our town contracts. These are our largest of that pie chart, obviously, is Indian Trail. I think they're currently at about thirty-six total positions funded by the Town of Indian Trail. Obviously, they're the largest by population municipality in the county. They have a huge traffic issue up there, so they've spent, you know, a lot of time and energy trying to address traffic concerns with, and we have several of our deputies assigned to traffic units to try to slow people down, but also deal with traffic accidents and clear those roadways as quickly as they can. Then you'll see, you know, Weddington has three, Marvin, of course, two, Lake Park has two, and Wesley Chapel still holds at just one dedicated officer. These are our towns. It just shows the population that, based on the numbers we had available and their total budget, total employees, kind of give you some comparison. Those, obviously, on the right are our municipalities that we contract with that I just spoke of. Indian Trail, that the number to the far end on Indian Trail's deputy, some of those positions are also civilian positions. And it shows you the cost of what that looks like for each to add one deputy to the contract. So here, here we go. So I know I spoke with Ms. Amos earlier. There is a little bit of an increase, I think maybe eight to nine percent potentially in total contract calls per deputy for this next budget year. A lot of that is due to an increase in salary, long overdue, I might add, for some of our office, for our whole agency that we were fortunate enough to benefit from just a few weeks ago. And we're hoping that the county will fund an additional increase in the budget in July, but that hasn't yet happened. That's why there's an asterisk in that first number, that fully-loaded deputy, because that's sort of projected. So a fully-loaded deputy right now, if the county was to add one more school resource officer, you're looking at two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to do that just for one. As salary benefits, operating capital, equipment, everything, total package. And then where where you guys stand is in the contract rate at the very bottom, the ninety percent, that's a ninety-ten split with the county. We've tried to adjust the amortization schedule on some of the equipment, specifically the vehicle. We were, we were replacing those cars on the contract positions every four years, but because the vehicle cost that that we have to pay, the baseline cost has gone up significantly beyond our control. We've tried to stretch that from a four-year replacement to a five-year to lower that a little bit to help the towns absorb that a little easier, but you're looking at approximately one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven thirty-three as today's numbers per deputy. If you added one deputy, that's about what you'd be paying for that additional officer per year. That following slide, just when I talked about some of those equipment costs and the replacement schedules, and this certainly is not all of those, but just a few, a few of those items of equipment for the officer, for example, the the long-sleeve shirts, they're issued for. Each of those shirts cost about two hundred, I'm sorry, the four shirts collectively are two hundred and twenty dollars. They're replaced every year. The body armor and where it's under the quantity on number five, they're replaced every five years. That's how the company warranties those pieces of equipment. And they're about thirteen hundred dollars, but they're amortized at two sixty. One of the other additional increases, we just went to a new body-worn camera system and a new in-car camera system that we believe is the the best product available for our our needs. That's a little bit of an increase in cost. That's not reflected on here, but it is in that total projected cost. So that's just an idea of an example of some of the breakdown in the way those those costs are added in. But then the other thing, again, in that very bottom block, there are the additional services that aren't necessarily calculated in that cost. You get access to our entire Investigations Bureau. If there's a major crime, they're coming. Our crime scene units come and animal services. Our community services are part of your national night out and programs that are that are held here. Our support services, the folks out serving civil processes. Our SWAT team guys, you know, if there's a standoff, if there's a significant event, they're gonna come and those resources are certainly available to you at at really no direct cost. That's just an additional service provided by the. That's just an additional service provided by the sheriff's office. So if you would, the next slide, please. Okay, these are Marvin patrol events. If you'll look at twenty twenty-three, same as the county wide, the way that's broken down. Those self-initiated cars, the two guys that are assigned here, look, last year they were busy. They were getting after six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven, um, self-initiated events these guys were involved in, just in one calendar year. They're not just sitting there. They're out working, they're doing preventive patrols, they're trying their best to keep crime low with that high visibility philosophy. And then there was, it's interesting, let the calls for service that were dispatched to Marvin cars was two seventy-three, whereas in twenty-two, it's two seventy-two. It's almost the same. Um, so if you would, the next. And then this one, total calls for service, uh, and patrol events for the village of Marvin. If you look, the blue column is our two Marvin cars. So they, they handled two hundred and seventy-three of the total eight hundred and ninety-seven calls. So you had about thirty, maybe close to thirty-one percent of the total call volume handled by the dedicated Marvin cars. So you got about a sixty-nine to seventy percent gap, if you will, handled by our zone four cars. Or it may have even been a situation, if it was an accident that the highway patrol may have responded to, could have been something else like that. But the majority of that not handled by Marvin would have been one of our other, uh, county cars in zone four. Traffic accidents, again, this is a countywide issue. You'll see that, um, there was a spike in like twenty twenty of five forty-eight. Um, but last year there were three hundred and fifty-six total accidents reported in the village of Marvin. Two hundred and sixty-four of those were handled by those two cars assigned to Marvin. That's a high percentage that those two, you know, units handled themselves. And the balance of that, the other ninety-eight or so would have been handled by either our county cars or highway patrol.
So I would, I would have to think that the, uh, that spike in twenty twenty was because a lot of people weren't actually in the office. They were out and about. So yeah, I would think that that would be attributed.
A lot, a lot of people were out moving around. I mean, this is the specific, uh, uh, you know, column that relates to the question you asked her earlier about the, the response time for Marvin cars only. You'll see theirs is about nine point five nine in twenty twenty-three. The year before, a little better. Twenty nineteen was their best year. Um, that, that's gone up a little bit. And, and to give you a reason why, I don't know. Other than the traffic, but those numbers are real numbers based on the time they, that call is sent to them for, for response by the, until they check on scene. That's how that's calculated. So that's an average of nine point five nine minutes.
What, what year is it that we added the second officer? So some of that would be a reflection of that as well, too.
Because I saw a big drop right around then. Just to give you a, an idea of, of total crimes, these are your instant reports between part one crimes, which are your more serious crimes, crimes against person. Your robberies, murders, your burglaries, your, uh, breaking, entering and larcenies versus part two crimes, your lower level crimes, more property related, car break-ins, things like that. Um, part one crimes, there was thirty-four in twenty twenty-three. The previous year there were twenty-six. And part two crimes, there were ninety-five reported in, uh, twenty twenty-three as opposed to one oh three the year before. So is there a, a, an increase? It, it fluctuates a little bit. It looks like the highest was in twenty twenty-one as far as part two crimes. Um, but if you go back to twenty twelve, you see the blue column of sixty-four part one crimes. So is there a pattern? It's hard to predict, but it looks like it's, it's kind of fluctuates, but it's within a normal, uh, range.
Well, I would say that the part two crimes probably are much higher now because it's just the, the sheer, um, increase in population, I would think.
Well, I, I, I agree. Car break-ins are going to drive that number as well. If you get hit hard in one night, you may have twenty in one night. That's going to drive those numbers up. Total instant reports, um, these are, these are just breaking, entering and larceny reports. I know there's been some questions about some of the home break-ins, but this is where these would fall. You had six breaking, entering reports in twenty twenty-three, four in twenty-two, and there were twenty-five larceny reports last year as opposed to seventeen the previous year. And then this is, the next slide shows the, the location pin drops, if you will, of where those breaking, entering and larceny events occurred. Um, you will see that I think it looks like s- seven of those were in this general area right around where we are here. Um, and the other two of those were east of highway sixteen and one well south of Newtown Road. DWIs. One unlucky individual, uh, this past year. Don't know. Don't know. Um, and then Marvin car crashes, was that the last slide on there? So the, again, I think that at the very top, the, um, all law enforcement in Marvin, you know, responded to. I think that's one oh nine at the very top. And of those total crashes, it looks like our Marvin cars handled, uh, thirty-three of, of those, about two point two two percent of total crashes or twenty-two percent, I should say. Um, so that's just kind of an overview, a general overview of, of, uh, how we did in twenty twenty-three as an, as an agency countywide and then specific to Marvin. So, um, I'll. Yes, sir.
You know, we discussed different things about how to. You gotta turn your mic on, so.
Sorry.
And they always say I'll talk too much, you see. Nobody heard me, so. Um, no, I'm just curious if, if that's something that we could discuss at, at Wuma with other things.
Absolutely.
This is definitely important information to get a hold on. Is there a need for extra?
Right.
You know, officers, obviously, we, this is a big, it's, it's obvious. I look at this and it's like, fund the police. I mean, obviously, the interactions that you guys are having to keep the numbers down.
To answer your question, have we done this? Yes, sir. We did it for Weddington. Um, did the same presentation for, specific to Weddington earlier this year.
Okay.
Um, and, and we're always available to do that for, and we're going to do this for Indian Trail as well. Um, but we haven't done it this year for Lake Park, Wesley Chapel. We haven't. I don't know that they're interested in it, but, uh, we're available to do it if they want it. So Wesley Chapel, I can tell you, I don't mind telling them, because I told the mayor, they definitely need more officers, no doubt. And they're not doing it. But, um, you know, but that's, that's Wesley Chapel's decision. But, uh, you know, the.
They're also at a penny, I think, too. They're very low tax rate. I think one and a half, two cents, something like that.
They, they have a, they have a large retail footprint. Um, they, they have a lot of restaurants, Target, they, they draw a lot of people into that community and a lot of traffic through that community. So do they need more than one? A hundred percent they do.
Yeah. I, I could definitely see that just because of the demographics that are there that.
Right.
Would require it.
Yeah. Any more questions or that I can answer or Captain Tyson or Lieutenant Mayhew?
Can we get a copy of this?
Absolutely. Mr. Yao has it. He can email it to you guys. I mean, it's public record. We're happy to release it to you.
Yes, we will. I can provide answers to some.
Yes, sir.
That ask me.
Um, I'm sorry, did you come prepared to answer the questions that they had to Lieutenant May?
I will, I will attempt to.
Okay. Do you have those?
I do. He sent me a copy of them. He, he's much better prepared than I am. You want me to read those questions or?
That'd be great.
I think there were six total questions that, that were included in his material that he gave me. The first was what type of structures were broken into during twenty-two and twenty-three in Marvin? Um, and of that total, which we showed on the chart, there were ten total, five were homes. Five of those were considered other structures, whether it's an outbuilding, a business, office building, any of the, any of those. So there were ten total, but five were residents. There was another question. The second one was, were there any reported narcotics related incidents on walking trails or green spaces? As much as we can drill into our reports and try to extract the information about where those drug arrests or drug reported crimes have occurred. It, it's almost impossible to say exactly there are any, but we are not aware of any that were involved on walking trails over the last year or two in this area. We're not, we're not aware of any. What are local criminal conviction rates for Union County? Uh, Lieutenant May did reach out to the district attorney's office. Um, they don't have specific numbers on that, but what the district attorney himself emailed in response and said, um, DA Robinson highlighted that while an exact number is not readily available, his office remains extremely successful in obtaining justice for local victims via criminal convictions and remains committed to protecting our residents but working hand in hand with local law enforcement. I can tell you from my experience of thirty-five years of doing this, our DA's office is one of the best. Um, they are very successful in prosecuting cases to a, uh, favorable resolution in bringing accountability to offenders. Um, they don't just dismiss cases without a good reason. They, they are very successful in seeking a, uh, conviction of something. Even if it's a plea, but they're not afraid to try a case. Are additional contract deputies needed for the village of Marvin? I'll leave that up to you guys, based on the, the information we provided. Um, if, if you want to fund it, we will provide it. If you don't feel that you need it at this point, that's your decision, you know, as a council. Um, but I, I would say this is, is you pay for prevention. I'm just, that philosophy works, having those preventive, uh, patrols, those preventive, you know, events and being proactive does prevent crime from coming into your community. So it's just something to think about as you continue to grow. You may not need it this year, but it's just something to think about as you, whatever your projected growth might be. May, may you need another one in a year or two. I mean, that's something just to, to consider and think about.
Real, real quick, you, you made the comment when we talked about Wesley Chapel, you said a hundred percent.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I being here in the village, we have two deputies and they have times and they have shifts and they try to cover as much as they can. Based on what you see from the times, the time, and again, we're paying, we're paying for prevention.
Right.
And that's the most important element of this. Would, would you say? I don't know that you would say that we, we're, we need a, we need an additional deputy one hundred percent. Um, but would you give us a forty percent, thirty percent? And, and again, I'm not trying to hold you to a number. I'm, I, because we look to you, because you have great statistics and you've done, you've done us a great service of bringing this in. But as you look throughout the rest of the county, would you say we're on the verge of possibly looking at bringing another officer in?
I, I think you're close.
Okay.
I don't know that you're there yet. It, it depends on what your projected growth might be. I mean, I know you added a Publix and some shopping centers and more retail space. If you add retail space, there's always the potential for more nefarious activity to come here. Um, and so that's just something to think about. If it's, if it's mostly residential, even like Weddington is largely residential and, and they have, you know, a Harris Teeter shopping center, but most of it is residential. Um, it, it's, it's not as needed. Now, their population is higher. So they've got a more, a much greater, uh, you know, density and population that we have to serve. But it's, you are spread out a little bit. You do have heavy traffic in this area that does factor into those response times a little bit. So if you had another officer on duty, it, it could reduce those response times a little bit, you know, if you had a, another one. But it's just something to think about. I, I can't really say for certain, because I don't want to make that decision for you. I want, you know, just trying to give you the information to, to, to consider.
So one of the things, you know, when you think about people working, they work a forty hour week, right? So when you think about two deputies, that's an eighty hour week. Now, a certain amount of their time is going to be dedicated to administrative tasks, other types of things, other than just kind of what you would call patrolling or pure police work, right? I- is, is there a formula that you use so that we think that in our mind? You know, should they be spending of those forty hours a week, thirty of it, you know, on, on actual policing activities and the, uh, you know, because that helps us to kind of figure out that gap in, in, in coverage potentially.
Preventive.
When, when, when you, when you look at, you know, two officers isn't necessarily eighty hours, it might be sixty hours. You know, when that, that you're looking at in a week.
Well, and, and Lieutenant May, who could speak directly on point to this, but I think only one of those officers on duty at a time. They're not on duty at the same time.
And then, and well, that's, that's it. That was the question that I was going to ask is, you know, okay, so you say that we may be on the verge of needing a, a third deputy here in, in the village. Is that to extend the hours of service or is that to maybe have two on at a time during certain times where it would reduce our response times? Um, or would it be maybe a combination of both where it could, it, because I could see where it could be more efficient to have two at a time and during certain times, uh, maybe certain, certain days of the week, certain times when things are a little bit more peak. I guess you could say, um, versus maybe just twenty-four seven coverage where it, it's all spread out and everybody's just getting more, you know, coverage times. Because I know you have the zone four cars here as well that patrol through. So I know there's some backup for our deputies. They're not here by themselves, but you know, I, I just trying to kind of get an idea of where you would kind of go with it for, for a third one if we were to, to decide that.
Lieutenant May, he sets their schedules and he could probably tell you better on how that would look if you had added a third one. All right. So what Chief was saying, the two contract cars we have now, they work within our, we have four squads on patrol. Uh, AMB and CD rotation. So one for AB, one for CD. And they work during peak call times and we look, we monitor that if in summertime months, you know, call volume is picking up later in the evening, we'll shift those hours for them. What, if you were to add another officer and you're talking, asking a question, how would the hours look? Mainly what you would probably have is a, an admin car that would work mercifully during the week and then the other two cars still working. So there would be overlap.
Okay.
Now, to get to a twenty-four hour coverage, you couldn't do it with three. You'd have to have more.
Okay. Um, I'm just trying to get a, an idea of how they would be dispersed, just basically on what, what the advantage would be for us to, to, you know, go to the public and say, okay, we, we need another deputy on, on duty and it was, how was, how that would be effective. If, I mean, if we added a second deputy because the public said they wanted that extra, right? And it seems to be very effective. Um, our deputies are top notch. I, there is no argument there. Uh, they do their job. They do it very well. Um, you can see by the numbers that they're doing it, but I can also see that they're doing it just on a day to day. Um, it's, it's about efficiency and about the expenditure and what the, what the public wants. So, um, that's, we're just trying to kind of feel through, you know, what's going to be the best course of action and, and, um, you know, do we suggest it to the public and are they going to say yea or nay? Do they want to spend that money? Um, versus their, their safety, right? And, and I feel like that we're in a pretty safe situation right now.
I, I think this is a lot of really good information that we're going to digest and talk about and see what we want to do, um, kind of coming down the pipe. So I appreciate.
Yeah. And I think the visibility part of just seeing them in our, uh, neighborhoods more often, riding through is a sense of comfort, knowing that they're out there. And if it requires another one to, to, to address those fifteen, sixteen different neighborhoods within, that's a, that's a good thing. The only thing that I, I, I'm bringing away is like, even though Wesley Chapel, I think is lower population, but they have more of the retail which can tend to draw that. So as we change some of the landscape here, that's something that would have to be considered on how we address that going forward. So.
Retail space is a, is a big factor in, in the need for officers. Because you're just naturally, you're going to bring people there that aren't necessarily residents, but they come to, to enjoy a restaurant or to shop at a Target or go to a Chick-fil-A or Hickory Tavern. They're going to bring people there. Tavern. They're going to bring people there. And so you bring a volume of outsiders into your community. You just you just open it up for those opportunities. We try to be present to prevent that from happening. And that's part of what has to be considered to going back to the what you were saying, Mr. Wortman is. If we if you were to consider adding another one, essentially, you would have that admin cars Lieutenant May he referred to that are essentially your daytime hours, Monday through Friday. So most of that time during your peak hours when you're heavier traffic and more volume of people are out and about, you're going to have two cars instead of one on duty.
Right.
And so he fluctuates those those schedules, you know, depending on time of year, summer, when more people are out later, you got kids out of school, you know, out and about doing things. There's a greater need to move them later in the day, maybe 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM versus 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. But keep in mind, you're always going to have a sheriff's deputy or more available to respond. You always will. That's your zone four. But that dedicated car that's right here for that 90% of the time is is what we're talking about. Those 10% is admin and it's also training in time when they are required to go do their, you know, annual in-service firearms training, those things that takes them away from you. Or if they make an arrest.
So that was accurate, about 10% is what you dedicate to admins.
An average of 10% away from their assigned duty.
Of course, that a third deputy would would kind of help cover that 10% that they're that they have to be.
They wouldn't be going at the same time.
Right. So that, well, that that really answers my question because I feel like that 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 heightens the the visibility, which is a deterrent and it's also a comfort. But it also, it would most likely reduce that average response time because, you know, that's where your longer response times are coming when we have higher volumes of traffic and and those types of situations, those increase those things. So you would have to think that it would would certainly decrease that response time overall.
Sure.
Okay.
Now, were there other questions that?
I know there was one more that I hadn't read. This was about village ordinance enforcement overview. Now, I haven't personally reviewed your ordinances, but our attorney did review them. And he said after reviewing the current Marvin ordinances, the only enforceable ordinance that was found was the discharging of a firearm within town limits. That would coincide with any North Carolina general statute applicable in that situation. So those were the questions that I had, you know, given to me by Lieutenant May. But are there others or anything else that we haven't?
I think there's one more that's not really a question. It's more clarity. We had a constituent that I think talked to, talked with you about, I guess, a break in that said that it came from the trail. Do you remember? Do you recall having that?
I'm familiar with it. I didn't talk with the resident, but I am familiar with that situation.
Yeah. And again, I think there's.
One of our detectives.
Okay.
Out here after the meeting.
Oh.
Out here after the meeting.
Me and Lieutenant May, yeah. I basically stood by, but I heard their conversation.
Okay. And.
So there's, I guess there's confusion about it because and and we're just trying to get to the, you know, like, trying to figure out who who is right and who was, you know, we're not trying to point the finger at anyone.
Right.
But someone's made a statement that 100% that this person came in from the trail system. And we have, you know, and when that person goes out on social media saying it come from the trail system, and it's 100%, we need to know if that's if that's the case because then we need to do things proactively to address it. So someone gave them the impression that it was 100% that that person came from the trail system. Did someone say? You know, because words do matter.
Sure.
Did that break in or whatever the case may be? Did that come from the trail? Did that? Person who did the did the act, the the crime, did they come from the trail system? Was it stated 100% yes, that they did? Because we have one side saying that they did and another side, and we're hearing that it didn't. So we're just trying to balance the two to figure out which one, because we we should though, if if it, you know, because then there's things that we can do that.
Well, I would say, I would say this, not knowing the conversation exactly that that may have occurred between this individual and one of our employees. I've I've been told what some of that was about and and it was more hypothetical, not conclusive or not definitive, because we that situation has not been resolved by arrest. It's still it's still an open investigation. So those factors are not known at this point. So to say conclusively, was the trail system, you know, and and an access point for a criminal? I don't know. Could it have been? Yes. But was it? We don't know. Because we don't know how it was committed unless there's a surveillance camera footage that shows this individual accessing the home from there or a witness saw them or the person we later arrest tells us that we don't know that.
And my assumption, and we know how assumptions go.
Sure.
Is that? Knowing law enforcement, that they would not say something unless it's unless it is in fact definitive. And.
We try not to. We try not to speculate.
Well, again, speculation gets you in trouble.
Right.
It gets us all in trouble. And all we're trying to do is. We're just trying to get to the, you know, to the bottom line of, because if it did happen and it's 100% and you can tell us with 100% certainty that they come from.
Sure. If it was more important, if it was happening all around, because it would revisit the whole trail system that everybody's doing. If that's a conduit to higher crime, then we're going to want to do something about that. But that's where the, that's probably why you're back here too. And I apologize for that because.
No, it's not a problem.
It's but it's wasting resources and it's waste wasting time when we have individuals that claim certain things and 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 we've now we have to do a fact check and and now we're doing it again, another fact check where it's just, it's it's.
Well, we're just trying to get to the, and and again, I appreciate y'all coming in and and I appreciate the dialogue that you have with us and the dialogue that you have with, you know, any of our constituents that are out there. I just cautious, you know, I'm just cautious in how we, you know, how it's, you know, because we're not part of that conversation. And but when that conversation, when when you have that conversation or anyone and the sheriff's department has a conversation with a constituent, that constituent then goes back out and, you know, which they can do.
Right.
And go out there and say with 100% certainty that this this happened. If it did, then we need to know and y'all need to let us know.
And I could tell you, based on that investigation that is still unsolved.
Okay.
We don't know. Now, now, did someone say that it was? I don't know what they might have said, but that is not a fact that we know. So we can't say with any level of certainty or uncertainty, for that matter, that the trail was a was a factor. I don't know. It could have been. But then again, there's no evidence that it was.
So at this time, there's no evidence that it was. And again, I'm not saying that they're wrong and I'm not saying that y'all are wrong. We just need to know what is what has been said so that we can, we can, you know, you know, make make changes to what we're what we how we how we address the trail system. Like, again, we're just like you, we want to be proactive instead of reactive because reactive gets you in in bad position.
Right.
So but I appreciate the clarity on that. And thanks for y'all coming out and sharing this.
Thank you.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
You categorize scams, phone scams and et cetera, because the there's three over 55 communities in the within the boundaries of Marvin and several older people in those areas and others. How do you classify that or do you not count those?
We only count them as a crime stat if they actually are out anything. If they pay money or anything of value, if they lose a possession of any kind, if it's just an attempt to solicit, you know, money or somebody tries to get you to send money to to bail a relative out of jail, or, you know, they tell you that you've missed jury duty or any of those common, you know, scams that we see routinely multiple times a week. We don't do reports on those because there's so much of it. We just try to use a proactive educational strategy and tell people, be mindful of these things because it's it's just not real. And but the only time, but there are people, unfortunately, who do sometimes become a victim and they will go and get the the gift card and then give them the number off the back and then they are a victim. And then that we do a report and an investigation on. But those are rare, thankfully.
Well. The incident that I know of, the the person was very ashamed of what they did.
Right.
And they got caught and they really didn't want to tell anybody.
Sure.
But they finally had to call your.
Well, if they're out money or anything of value, they should report it to us because they're not the only one. These people do this. They're good at it.
There is one other thing. I I'd like to commend Officer Swan because I'm I've also been an HOA president and I know he has sent communications regularly when he hears of those specific specifics type scams and stuff going on in our area or other particular crimes. But he he also communicates directly out to that, you know, email list of folks. And and I think that's a really good best practice and and appreciate all Deputy Swan doing that.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much for coming, gentlemen.
All right. Apologies. Okay. Next up, we have a discussion of future funding analysis to firm village of Marvin's commitment to a Bonds Grove Wax on Marvin. Christina, I show you.
Good morning. So here with us today is Transportation Planner Bjorn Hansen. Did I get your title right? We had a, if you all recall, on August 8th of 23, the village entered into a contract with Union County for the construction of the Bonds Grove Wax on Marvin Roundabout. You all had some questions about timelines and potential termination subsequent to the geo bonds failing. So we had that meeting with the county, state and federal DOT on March 15. And here we are to present options for you all to consider the finding of additional funding in your agenda packets. There's a very in-depth memo that I'll go through and kind of read some of these options. But once I finish, I'm going to pass it over to Jill to go over a couple of financial projections for you all. The first option that I want you to consider is to de de-sunset the ordinance establishing the vehicle tax fee of $25, which is set to expire this year and increasing that fee to $30 per vehicle. We actually do have that in your agenda packets under the consent agenda. So if that's not an option you ought to want to consider, before you get to that consent, you need to remove that item. With the projections that you're going to see that Jill's going to present to you in just a couple of minutes, this option is already included in there. So you'll see that option with that, those projections presented. The second option is to consider committing a percentage of the available fund balance for the subsequent years that we have financial obligations to the county. The third option is to analyze reducing other future commitments, such as our preventative maintenance plan and our Providence widening project, which is slated for 27, 28. There is currently no agreement in place for that. So we would just be simply taking that off the line for future commitments. Jill's going to present that in her financial projections as well. The fourth option is to consider a percentage of the revaluation estimates to be held or earmarked for the construction phases. She you'll see in her projections, we have already obligated the planning and engineering. We've already paid that. We're fine with that. The next phase is the right-of-way acquisition and that's a very small amount. We really don't run into problems until we get into the construction phases. She has all that in her projections as well. The other fifth option, and this is not really one that I would consider you guys really hanging a lot of weight on, is the reliance of potential funding to be obtained from the Waxah's Adelina project. As a part of their transportation improvement analysis, there was a identification of this intersection to require a right turn lane. I don't know the exact dollar amount, somewhere in the $200,000 to $300,000 range. We're still working with Waxah on determining what that exact amount is. We won't have that until a engineer stamps and certifies that estimate. Could be a year down the road. It could be a couple of months. There's a lot of unknown variables with that option and it's a little bit risky to rely on that money because we don't know 100% that we would get that.
That's discretionary on their part, correct?
It is discretionary on Waxah's part. It's also reliant on the project even coming to fruition. The developer could pull out or they could postpone the development for years down the road. So it is a risky option for you all to consider relying on that funding because it's a very unknown number.
And that that funding wouldn't even come to them until, what's the criteria? The first CO is completed in the project. It could be two years, maybe three years down the road.
It would be in their phase one. They would have to complete it before phase one. I don't know the exact timeline. I think Jeff actually did email me. I'll pull it up in my email and look.
But it is, it's a, but my point is, is like, it could be two, three years before they even receive receive that money to even consider re-appropriating towards.
Correct.
This. Yeah. Okay. I was just trying to establish a timeline there.
Um, let's, I'm sorry. calculation of necessary tax increases over the planned project years? I mean, that's a given. Looking at the. Ways to find additional funding, that is an option for y'all to consider. And there's a couple of other things that I wanted to mention, which is switching committed fund balance for land acquisition to roads. We currently have around $350,000 in committed fund balance for land acquisition. I think the intent on that was for future parkland, but I really, that was before my time. You could reallocate that money. And then the last option is to rely on. A reduction in the cost overruns and that's not a standalone option. We still need to find funding to pay for the construction, but we do have a pretty healthy amount listed in the cost overruns projected. I had a conversation with, I think Bjorn and Jennifer Stanford in reliance to the CRTPO allocations that could come, which basically if we have construction overruns, and Bjorn, you can chime in if I say anything incorrectly here, if we have cost overruns, we could potentially apply for shortfall funding with CRTPO, which would result in a 80, 20% split, we being the 20% and we being the county and the village. So we would be on the hook for 54% of the 20% cost overruns. Essentially, we would be on the hook for 10% of the cost overruns. So we currently have in our projections around $250,000 in cost overruns. We could reduce that number dramatically to kind of change some of the the models. Aside from that, that's the only options that I can consider to to for y'all to consider at this point. So I'm going to turn it over. Does anyone have any specific questions before she goes into the projections?
I'm looking through here. The only thing I see is 26, 27, 28. I don't say anywhere they're coming. But we really don't have a start hard start there. They just want to make an engineering.
So the the engineering is going on right now that we literally just sent the check over within the last couple of weeks. I want to say that was around $50,000. They are they are starting on that anytime now. From what DOT tells us, it's around 18 months for the next period to start. Now, we have requested that to be expedited. So. I don't know if they can expedite it, but I would say anywhere between 12 and 18 months, the next phase would start, which would be the right-of-way acquisition. And that would be another probably 12 to 18 months, if not a little bit less. I don't know if you know the answer to that. And then the construction we had planned in 27, 28. Is that correct?
What's?
Yeah.
What's the next amount of money that they need?
She has that in her projections. I think it's around 60, 70.
So I have a question, though, on the overruns. Is the county prepared to pitch in on the overruns at 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 the completion of the project?
The county has.
Going to be responsible for 100% of that?
The county has an agreement with with DOT where they were responsible for their percentage of the overruns, which the.
Okay, that, well, because you she was, I wanted to clarify because you were talking about the shortfall thing with CRTPO. So so whether or not we do that, the county will pitch in some on the overruns.
Yes.
All right. I got it. I just that just wanted to clarify that.
So she can go over the projections. She has that next year's obligation and then you'll see the obligations that we have. I'm actually going to get her to start with the fund balance because there's a couple of problems with the option of allocating fund balance. I want you guys to identify at least before you see the the road tracking system. So I'm going to turn it over to Jill.
Austin, can you put my laptop on the screen, please? Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, so you have a printout of this in front of you. And just as a side note, trying to play my part in helping to reduce the misinformation being spread online. So you're going to start seeing these sort of draft. So you're going to start seeing these sort of draft watermarks on some of our documentation here. I don't necessarily feel comfortable as Finance Director having things that I present to you being presented publicly as final documents or things that decisions that have been approved. So I'm not trying to make it harder for y'all to see, but just trying to cut down on some misinformation. So what we have here, well, first off, we have a lot of residents that are starting to pay attention now and watch playbacks of our meetings. So even though y'all are well aware of what fund balance is, we did run into this issue during Geo Bond and after it didn't pass where residents were saying, you know, you've got X amount of money sitting in fund balance. Why don't you just spend it? Why don't you just use it to pay for this or that? I want this. I want that. So just sort of what fund balance is for those that are newly listening or educating themselves on government finance. It's essentially the difference between what we took in for revenue and what we spent as our expenses. What's left over at the end of the year, that is our fund balance. And fund balance really is going to serve three purposes for a municipality like us. One, it's going to provide us with cash flow. Our fiscal year starts July first, but our tax revenue, our tax bills are not due until January first. So we can't just spend all of that money. We've got to use it to sort of float the first six months of our fiscal year until we receive our our tax revenue in January. So that's one purpose. The second purpose is it provides emergency funds. It is not fast. It's very difficult for a municipality to just raise money and quickly. So if something were to happen, there was some type of emergency or we needed capital or any type of funds, it's good to have that emergency stash. And then the third way that a municipality can use fund balance, which our municipality under your leadership and governance has been so great at, is you can use it to save up for future expenses that you know are coming and or you've entered into inter locals or contracts for various projects that are not going to be paid for a few years. You can use your excess to sort of store up for that and plan ahead. So that's what we've been doing for years. That's what we continue to do. Here you can see basically out through fiscal year twenty nine to thirty, where I am keeping track of the the money that I know that we are committed to spend. For the most part, you'll see one item in yellow that we are not yet committed to spend, but that is for the stream rehabilitation grant that we've applied for.
Hang on, sorry. I just want to clarify something here because there was some allegations stated on social media about me lying about this particular grant. There is a, there's a grant, grant called STIP, which is the CRTPO grant, which you see here as the Marvin Loop CRTPO, otherwise known as STIP, because that's how CRTPO classifies those grants. This grant that she is referring to, I have referred to as STRAP. STIP and STRAP are two different grants. They are not the same thing. We did receive the STIP grant back in twenty twenty one, if I recall correctly. The STRAP grant, what, which is referred to here as the Stream Rehab Grant, has not been awarded. We have not projected any real numbers on an on an actual award date. We have $500,000 here with another $500,000 potentially projected. This is not actual received grants. It is just projections that we have for you all to consider in the analysis of the fund balance with the hope and the expectation that we at least receive something. We have not received any money or approval for the Stream Rehab Grant or otherwise known as the STRAP Grant for people that are listening.
And Jill, real quick. All right, so real quick. We used to years ago do a capital funds. How is that different? Like, do we still put so much in for capital expenditures if we were to buy a building? Or I know we did it for this and so much saved up. Are we still doing that? And is that different than the fund balance?
So we have, we actually have a policy that talks about what you're referring to. And that's if there's no ongoing, we have to commit a certain percentage of our current revenues with the with the annual budget budget cycle. If there's no current capital projects that are going on. We have, since that has started, we have always had a capital project going on. We haven't had any funding available to commit to meeting that policy, unfortunately. So we're still within the realm of the policy because we've had active capital projects going on. But to your point, no, we are not putting any money aside. And and that is different in a sense that is committed for a specific purpose, and it has to stay in our committed for a specific purpose kind of bucket of money. We can reallocate it to another purpose, but it can't go back. Once it's committed, it cannot go back into unassigned fund balance. It has to stay within projects.
And as the dust settles and the, you know, we're paying our bills because we're floating and we're having money for emergencies and other funding that we have available. That's not just, we don't look at that at the end of the year and say, okay, well, for the next year, we have $300,000 that we can go out and and address this pathway that that needs to be done. Or how does that work?
Okay, so just to go back to your first question. When you adopt the budget ordinance annually, we do sometimes allocate some money for capital expenses. So we've been putting a small amount of money away for greenways and trails like maintenance. And we've also been putting some away just for any equipment that we might need to purchase. So we're starting to build up to Christina's point. Once you put it in capital, it's stuck there. It has to be spent there. It can't be moved. Then we're also sometimes just assigning funds to where we'd like to spend it. It's not restricted. It's not, it's just sort of earmarked, but you you can move that money and you can change your mind about that if a more pressing priority comes up. So that's kind of what Christina was referring to when she mentioned reallocating the funds that you've got assigned for land acquisition. It's not capital, so it's not stuck in that category and it can be moved around. Let me just take you through this, and I think it'll answer your question about emergencies and things like that as they come up. But I'm going to start with fiscal year twenty three to twenty four. We're anticipating a small amount of money as progress is being made on the Marvin Loop. That is some money that we have to front, some that is our share. We're anticipating it happening so late in this fiscal year that the reimbursement likely will fall after July first. So that's why you're not seeing the reimbursable revenue. I do want to put in here, we did have a roundabout payment already for the Bonds Grove Roundabout. It was just over 47,000. The reason it's not listed, it didn't come out of unassigned fund balance. We were able to pay it through our our general fund budget this year, and that is because we knew way back that we were going to potentially have overruns for the other roundabout. And you all had done a fund balance allocation when we adopted this budget. We put 200,000 in from unassigned fund balance into our general budget to pay the 200,000 in suspected overruns for that roundabout. We actually didn't have any overruns at all, which was great. So that meant that that 200,000 was there and available, and we used 47,000 of it to make the first payment on the Bonds Grove Roundabout. So we were able to reallocate that. But moving forward into fiscal year twenty four and twenty five, you're starting to see that progress be made on the loop. Again, this is, this is a reimbursable grant, so I have to pay it in full, submit my receipts and then wait to get reimbursement. We haven't done that yet, so I can't tell you how long it takes to get reimbursed. I'm told it's pretty quick, but my definition of pretty quick and theirs might not be the same. So and then you're starting to see just a small amount of activity start to take place on the Village Hall Part F. That's mostly going to be planning, design and engineering costs. Twenty five to twenty six is where I start to get a little concerned. That's where I've highlighted and read for you. Because as you can see, if these projections of when these expenses will go out is correct, and this is also if we get awarded the million dollar, we're estimating maybe we'll get a million for the stream rehabilitation. And if we choose to accept that grant, we're going to start fiscal year twenty five to twenty six with roughly 1.8 million. That is a combination of unassigned fund balance plus some grants that we've got in the kitty already. So my total expenses that I'm going to have to put out is close to 2.6 million. And I am expected to get 1.6 of that back in reimbursements. But my concern is the timing. If I'm not getting my reimbursements back in a timely manner, I'm going to run into a cash flow issue. Now, we have other cash flow sources. And and some of this, we may have to decide needs to be pushed off or is not something we can commit to because of that. But this is where, you know, we're just constantly looking at why it's important that when residents are asking you, why don't you just spend the 1.8 that's sitting in your savings account? This is why. I need to make sure I have this cash available to front these grants until I get reimbursed.
I'm sorry, I just want to say one thing. Now, her, as she's referring to the reimbursables and her definition of quick, we have fully researched the contracts of all of our reimbursable grants that we have to date. We don't know what the stream rehab is because we, again, have not received that. We don't know the terms. We simply saw the pot of money. We saw the need in the community, and we want to do what we thought was best to help the community. So we will address that when that time comes. If if Cancel looks at this program and says, sorry, but we can't front that money due to these other obligations that we have out here, that's a decision that you all have to make at that point in time. We have looked at the Part F application grant and the STIP, otherwise known as the CRTPO grant that we have received back in twenty one. They're roughly quarterly. I think that the Part F is is monthly. So we should see a quick turnaround on those. However, there's going to be periods where there's a buildup of certain projects, like the engineering, that's just going to continually draw down and draw down. So we should be fine within that year, but we want to err on the side of caution to account for any discrepancies that may happen with that granting agency. Where they need to come back and review, they need to come back and do inspections because they do have to inspect. Part F has to expect inspect. I'm sure CRTPO, to some degree, has some level of inspection. We don't know what those are, and so we don't know how quick that turnaround is going to be. So we're trying to to caution and err on the side of caution in those two, in that year particularly. This also assumes that we don't have any other projects that come up in the next couple of years. Nothing else that we're going to commit fund balance to or that we have an emergency need that we have to commit fund balance to or any other reimbursable grant that we think is a great opportunity for us to partake in with within our operation. So I want to make sure that's that's clear and that's known.
Okay, so Jill, if I'm looking at this correct, at the end of fiscal year twenty eight, twenty nine, our unassigned fund balance is at $178,000? Yeah, okay. And that's probably under whatever the league wants. I mean, that's, that to me is not acceptable, like that number.
Yeah, the the other, I will say, this model does not currently assume that you are adding to your unassigned fund balance each year with your excess revenue over expenses.
So. And let me, let me just comment on that, too, because we typically, yes, we can't rely on that. And we typically have done that, but that's done through the due diligence of this board and staff being very frugal with expenditures. We try to get as much as we can with as little resources as we can. And that number has continuously kind of decreased, or at least we have seen that in this year. So we we present to you at the beginning of the year a balanced budget. We expect to spend 100% of that budget because that's how we budget things. We don't, we don't overestimate. In fact, there's quite often we come to you and we have to ask for more money for things. So I don't want y'all to rely on the fact that we are going to put money back every year. Obviously, that's the the option that we try to strive for and the goal that we strive for. But that's not something that we should really rely on because that means we're putting together a budget that's fluffed and inflated, and that's not what we do.
Right, okay.
So what, so when some of these things, you know, that that would fall into those categories, we've we've spoken about the roundabout that we didn't need the cost overruns on would be something like that. The trail that we we actually implemented that was projected to be like 140,000, that might be 80,000. Those are the types of things where when we find opportunities through the budget year that things come in lower than they are, tho- those kind of extra monies are what becomes available to to put into a.
It's that, and it's also staff diligently working to, you know, receive grants, to find funding. It's a combination of all kinds of things. It's it's little projects that Cancel has decided to do instead of hiring contractors. It's a combination of various things that we we really are lucky to have, but it's not, it's not something that really should continue, other than the grant seeking, that is, i- if we have the available fund balance.
Jill, can you manipulate this?
Yes.
Can you just take out the roundabout?
Yeah.
In seventy, in twenty seven and twenty eight?
I also, real quick, want to just respond to your question, Kim, which was. I have another tab on this spreadsheet that I will click on in a second. But it, we are required to keep a minimum by state statute. Every year I have to plug in this information on this spreadsheet. This is provided to me by the LGC. I put in our financial information and it tells us like this right down here, restricted stabilization by state statute. It tells us how much money we have got to keep, like, and it's restricted. So as you can see, the fund balance that we're looking at that was concerning to you was still above at least what that number was for using our last audit numbers.
Barely.
I know, I know.
I still think the league's going to come in and have a massive problem with us going from 2.1 to 170 some in a matter of five years.
So the league has, they have recommendations of the bare minimum that you need to keep. And then our board, of course, has its own policies. It's adopted on your minimums that you want to keep. The minimum is typically eight percent. It's one month worth of your your expenses and your operating stuff. And we have exceeded that for quite a while. There's no, I just recently spoke to the league and asked if there's almost like a maximum, like, is there too much that you can be sitting on in your fund balance? They said no, and typically, most towns don't have that problem unless they are very much like Marvin, where you have very high value homes and a small population and things like that. So, okay, I did make that change to.
Take out twenty eight, twenty nine.
The 250?
Oh, yeah, take, take it all out.
And the Providence Road.
I'm not saying that we're not going to do the roundabout. For those listening, everybody relax. I just want to see what the numbers look like because that is just using unassigned fund balance. And we have pretty much said that we're not going to be able to use unassigned fund balance to pay for this. It's probably going to have to be in a tax increase. So I'm not saying that we're not doing the roundabout. I just want to look at what the numbers look like. So everybody at home, relax.
So it's.
So that, that projects.
Way better, but it's still a 50% reduction.
So if you want her to go over to the road tracker sheet and look at kind of some options that we've identified.
What do you, what do you want from us today?
We want you all to consider what options that I presented in your agenda.
Do you want us to tell you what we want today?
We would like for y'all to at least have some, some consensus to us to dictate where we're going to come up with the money.
Okay.
Because we, we don't, we don't feel comfortable telling you to appropriate 100% fund balance.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not for appropriating 100% of those funds from fund balance. So I don't think that fund balance is an option, unfortunately.
One of the definite things that I want you to side on today is the vehicle tax fee of $30. We currently have it at $25. It is in your consent agenda to de-sunset that ordinance. So that would basically continue that vehicle tag fee to show what you're getting, getting ready to see in this model here. And Jill will go over that in just a second. So I definitely need an answer on that because it is in your consent. If you don't want to do that, we need to pull it out. But then additionally, I would like for y'all to at least advise us where you want us to start focusing the efforts because if we're going to go up in taxes, we need to, we need to do some projections on our end if we're going to commit it just for this project.
Okay, so it, so it, show us what that looks like.
Okay, so you guys have seen this multiple times. We keep trying to improve it to make it a little bit easier on the eyes. But essentially, this is where we track the different buckets of funds that we are using to plan and project way far into our expenses when it comes to roads, roundabouts, inter locals, widening, you know, curb gutter. This is not a budget at all. This is just how we plan for long-term expenses so that we anticipate ahead of time, to the mayor's question, when we know we have to pull something into the budget, I'm prepared for it because it's been on here for years. And I know that in 2025 to 2026. And I know that in 2025 to 26, for instance, we have this additional share of the roundabout on here, it would be about 64,000 roughly, that's an estimate. That would be for the right of ways. Again, that's following the 18, the 12 to 18 month timeline that uh, NC DOT and the county on our group call, we were able to get that information. So by having it on here and always being able to look years ahead, we are well prepared to pull these things into our budget as needed. Either from unassigned fund balance or other revenue buckets. Could be grants, um, it could be vehicle tag fees. So down at the bottom, you'll kind of see how we're sort of doing. If the numbers in green, it's because I have enough money to cover it. If it's in red, it's because I don't. And so um, this taking you through basically fiscal year 25 to 26. We run into an issue again where we've committed to this Marvin Loop project. 785,000 of it, I'm going to front it out and get reimbursed. But the other 524 is our match. That's our village contribution, we're not getting that back. So that does create sort of a deficit here. Where Powell bill is going to be enough to cover our, our road expenses and even that um that roundabout payment, the 785 is going to be reimbursed. So we're going to spend it out, but it's going to come back. So it's sort of like a wash. When it comes to the 524, it's going to essentially deplete all of the additional revenue that we've been earmarking and storing up in in anticipation of that payment. But by, oops, I'm sorry, clicked the wrong button. By increasing the vehicle tag fee to the maximum allowed, which is 30, which is the same as what Waxahaw and some of our other municipalities around us are charging. Um, and de-sunsetting it so it continues and does not sunset at the end of this fiscal year. It helps us add to this, in row 42, you'll see vehicle tag revenue fund balance. It helps to pad that each year. It would basically pad it at least based on this, this year's um projections, it would pad it by about 111,000 every single year. It would go up as more, the more vehicles are purchased or the the vehicle value changes. But um, it's going to just be another level of revenue to help offset some of these shortfalls each year. We're still going to run into a problem fiscal year 27 to 28. Kim, to your point, um, you asked me to take out that roundabout payment from fund balance. But it's still on this tracker and this projection because it, we are going to have to pay for it out of something. So it'll stay on here, but you can see the kind of impact it does cause us to at least right now be about 157,000 shy in fiscal year 27 to 28.
And I just wanted to mention.
Can I ask a quick question? So if we were to raise taxes just one penny, if you have a $500,000 house, it's $500, right? Am I right? Is my math right? Yes.
I I don't think one penny would be five, uh.
She said on a 500,000.
On a $500,000 house.
I, you do have a sheet in front of you.
500 on a 500,000.
He's talking about to the individual resident.
Yeah. Oh, okay, well, you do have a sheet in front of you that is a supplement to this conversation.
What's your increase per like?
Am I wrong?
You would take, you would take 500 divided by
100.
100 times one penny, if that's what you're trying to get.
Yeah.
The tax increase.
So it's $500, right?
It wouldn't be 500.
It should be 100, I think.
Yeah, it should be 100.
$50. $50 on a $500,000 house, yeah.
$50, okay, sorry.
For the year.
For the year. Okay, sorry, I know, sorry, sorry.
So I wasn't really planning to, um, I wasn't planning to, as part of this presentation, discuss the increases. But you do have it in front of you in case you do want to ask questions or pull that into this conversation. And I can put it up on the screen if you want me to.
I have one question. I've had, all of us have a lot of people ask us questions. They want to take this money and they pay for this, and then somebody else wants to pay for this over here. You're telling us, you're telling everybody, you can only spend this money one time, right? Pay one bill, you can't pay three different bills for the same bucket of money.
Correct, with the exception of if it's money that I'm going to pay out and then I'm going to get it right back in a reimbursement. I can, but I just can't pay it all at the same time. I have to wait until it comes back.
That's reimbursement, just one time too. Okay, so it doesn't keep refilling all the time. All right, I just want them to know too, that what we have to go through to try to figure this out.
Yeah.
Not as easy as bringing this bucket over.
One quick thing I wanted to remind you all is, if you remember at the last budget meeting, we told you, and we presented a balanced budget with no tax increase. We took several things out of the budget that um to 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 make that work. We also did a fund balance appropriation to 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 cover some of the operating expenses. You all advised us at that point in time to add those things back, to add a contingency that we had pulled out. And we have done that, and we definitely have a deficit, obviously, meeting just the operational budget with the things that were, we were directed to do at that meeting. So just want to remind you that this conversation is separate from the conversation of the already other discovered operational issues. Just, just, just a reminder.
So I think the action item that we need right now is for, to give you direction on sunsetting the the vehicle tax. And what else?
Definitely that one, the vehicle tax. Um, and then what other options do you want us to look into? Do you want us to figure out a percentage uh, tax increase for this project? Uh, again, secondary to what I just mentioned? Or do you want us to rely on the revenue um, revaluation, a percentage during that year? Those are really the two options.
So what are we looking at numbers wise for the revale? Have you got any kind of just a?
Not something that we are. Well, we don't know, we got to, we got to see what they come in at.
Right, that, that's really because.
They just said to us.
But but Joe, if whatever they, whatever the county does, has, doesn't impact us, absolutely. But it doesn't impact our responsibilities as the village. They're, they're not one in the same. If they want to do a 100% increase, we, that doesn't, we don't go, oh, well, if they do 100% increase, then we don't have to do anything. We still have responsibilities here. And for those at home, if you look at this, we've lived on six cent and we've done a tremendous job, I believe. Um, of of taking that little bit of pot of money and extending it and to having a so fund balance status healthy, be in case of emergencies. We have not, we've been fortunate, extremely fortunate, that we haven't had an emergency or something that we had to put, throw funds at where we weren't prepared to do it. And that's why we have to look long term. But when you start looking years ahead, so we as a council, we have, we have two options. One is, we, we, we don't look at that. We just kick the can down the road, let's do the bare minimum because as some people, some people have said, well, we don't want a tax increase. Well, you're, it's inevitable, or something's going to just not get done. And we could just kick the can down the road. Let, let some future council get, get, you know, get beat up because they're doing, they're, they're doing the responsible thing. Or we can be responsible and go, you know what? We have to look out that many years and take care of that. So future councils, you know, can still have a healthy fund balance to work with in case an emergency comes up with them. This isn't a fun, this isn't a fun scenario to go through. And we can't look at the county and go, oh, my gosh, if they do this. We can't, we still have to address our home and our issues here.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not depending on that. I just was, I was curious, I mean, like, so, so what we could do, we, just, just hypothetically, okay? Because I'm not saying that this is what we're going to do. But if we see by the numbers that we need to increase taxes by two pennies, just, just hypothetically. And the county comes in and they, they raise property values, valuations 40%. Just throwing a number out there. We have the option at that time to repeal that tax rate increase to go more towards a revenue neutral kind of situation. We still have to have the the money, but, and we still have to plan for the future. But we can also adjust it back if those valuations come in, whatever. I mean, with, because the, the rate's going to be adjusted by, by us. We still have to, the money, the bottom line is the money. We have, we have to, we have to plan ahead for that money to be there when that time comes to pay that bill. So I was just curious about what we thought maybe it was going to be, just.
So I just want to reiterate.
The federal government kicks the can down the road and we're over $30 trillion in debt. There you go, there's your answer.
Well, I just want to really quickly reiterate that what we're trying to do is give you all some options of there, there's really only, you've got contracts and interlocal agreements and commitments in place that really cannot be broken. So we're giving you options of things that we don't have agreements in place yet that you, we could reduce some of these expenses, like the Providence Road widening for 175,000 that you see in yellow, there is no agreement in place for that. Some of the preventative maintenance that we've been planning for. There might be a fiscal year where where we have to put that off a year because we have other commitments and we don't want to run the risk of. So that's one of the options in Christina's memo. As far as the, the tax increase, you know, to, just to reiterate what Christina said. We are coming back to you at the next budget session with a budget that is not balanced at your request, that shows everything that we put back in. And I'm sure, yes, cuts will likely be made, but to her point, potentially a tax increase could already be needed just to operationally cover the budget without this roundabout. When we hear from the county about evals, that all will get plugged into our models and into this tracker as well. And you may very well decide that you have some options. Or you may decide that the tax eval is that little increased revenue or whatever we might see is what we decide to earmark towards these future obligations that you have in here. So, did you want to?
We're not going to see that for till the fall, correct?
Yeah, you're not, you're not going to see that until next year.
We've got a budget to pass now.
Okay, so hold on, do we not have a contract for the Providence Road widening?
We do not, no. But but let me just make one point of clarification real fast. She mentioned reducing the preventative maintenance schedule, and I did mention that in my memo, but I will caution you that we just, actually on our consent agenda, we have a pavement condition survey that we are getting ready to pull the trigger with AMT. It's our required kind of three to five year analysis. The last time we done it was back in 2019, so we're kind of in that threshold. Y'all advised us at one of the last meetings to go ahead and pull the trigger on that. It's in your agenda, we're ready, we're ready to do that. Um, I have advised them, and you'll see in that contract that I am asking them to come up with a plan that includes preventative maintenance and a section of taking on new roads from DOT, primarily the residential streets that council wanted to, us to explore. The money that I am telling them to designate towards that is $150,000 per year. So if you decide to pull off of this $150,000 that she's got earmarked in 27, 28 and 25, 26, you're going to take away from that opportunity for us to either do the preventive maintenance and or take over some of the residential streets. So you need to keep that in consideration. If you mess with that, that will impact your goal that you had mentioned at one of the last meetings. Second thing I wanted to mention, and this is really just kind of brings everything to a head. We really, the truth of the matter is, we really don't have a problem until 27, 28. We obviously need to address it before then. But the really two biggest solutions to that is not removing the Providence widening because that's, that happens after the fact. We really need to consider what percentage, and I recommend a very small percentage of the fund balance, do you feel comfortable with, if any? Or a tax increase or some type of proportionate share projected for the revenue revaluation. We will have that revaluation before the impact comes into play. So we can designate that later, but I really, I really want to make sure you guys understand, we have to do it at that point. If we don't earmark a certain tax percentage increase.
175, is that reflected in the 28, 29 and 2930? Is that where that shortfall is showing up?
It would be projected in the 28, 29. So it's, it's after we have an issue.
Okay.
So, so I have a couple of questions. When we talk about sunsetting or not, the, the vehicle tax, if, if we don't sunset it and let it go, do we create another sunset? So, so that it's not in perpetuity, or?
We have projected the models where it's not sunsetted at all, and that's how the ordinance is written. So there is no sunset projected.
Okay, so, so that's one part of it. When I look at the options that that we have to kind of move forward, and and I think I'm hearing this from a, you know, a number of us. We have to look at, you know, the things that that we need to prioritize here outside of the potential revaluation. Because, I mean, who knows, they could even kick it down a year, you know, if they had a, a enough public push or or something like that, right? Because they could make changes to that. So my intent would be, we look at this, you know, really to cover what we need to on our own to make sure we don't have those shortfalls. And that really gives us the opportunity when that, we get those hard numbers from a county valuation standpoint. You, you know, to to either pull back on the taxes that we've already increased with, without, you know, uh, making it more revenue neutral. Or leave those in place and and make that county re- revaluation more revenue neutral two years from now, or whatever that is, where we have a better understanding of what our, our future commitments will be then.
So I think in, in summary, what you're saying is essentially look at a percentage tax increase for this proportionate share. And then when the revaluation year comes in, we will evaluate the tax rate and maybe do a reduction based on what would be.
There's just two ways to do it, and it might be a balance of both, you know?
So we just, we just need some direction from y'all, number one, on the vehicle tax fee. And then do you want to rely on the revenue neutral, or do you want to go, do you want us to go ahead and start analyzing, analyzing the, the reflective tax impact that would be needed?
So, so when you say the vehicle tax fee currently is in perpetuity, I, I, I kind of like the fact that we do have sunsets. You know, I, I think it forces us to make decisions like we even are now. So, you know, is it something that we could put into the ordinance since we're projecting out to 2930? That, that, that's, you know, a baseline that we set because we know we're going to need the monies from somewhere. But that we, we set it to sunset in 2930. We look at what it takes to, to, that shouldn't affect what we need to, to fund here. And, and then we look at that when we actually do get the revaluation numbers.
And it, if it's, if it's factored into this formula, then we have to take it through this. But I have no problem setting a sunset to the end of this projection. And then, you know, let, let whoever is on council at that time reevaluate whether that is, is still needed. Because, you know, all, all kinds of things change over the next however many years this is. So, yeah, I got, I got no problem with, with setting a sunset at the end of this for the 2930 being the, the sunset year. And then could be reevaluated at that point.
Two, two things, can I just quickly get a consensus on if you guys want to reallocate the land acquisition capital to this project? Because that, that would be, I guess, option number one, we should knock out the door altogether, either way.
I mean, I, I feel like that if we keep the, this, this is showing us if we keep the vehicle tag in place, right? So these numbers are reflecting that, so.
And it reflects, and it reflects you increasing it to the $30 maximum per vehicle.
So, so we're going to be short 156,658 on, in 27, 28, which is the, which is what we're going to have to pay for the roundabout, correct? That's that, that's where that comes in. So, and then we're, and then these numbers in, in 28 and 29, those numbers are reflective of the 175 we got to pay for the Providence Road project and maintenance, I'm assuming, is in that, in that formula where we're going to be short those years, right?
That's also the potential overruns that Christina mentioned earlier, where we could do the, the reduction in our, our share if we talk to CRTPO, do the, what did you do?
Shortfall. That's assuming we would get it too.
Okay, so my question is this, if we do re-appropriate the land acquisition funds and we stick that number in here, would that, would you feel comfortable that that would satisfy that shortfall for those three years? Or be reasonably close? Is that the remedy? Is that the remedy? Is that enough?
Also, Jill, I just noticed the potential fee in lieu. Is that two hundred thousand that's projected there? Is that, we might want to take that out just. So y'all can see that. That's the money that we would get if, if every, the stars aligned on that Adelina project.
Okay, so Christina and I were just chatting about this yellow hundred and fifty-two thousand that you see here. So as I mentioned at the beginning, for this year's budget, you all did an appropriation from unassigned fund balance of two hundred thousand to pay for the overruns of the other roundabout. We're not spending that. We're only, we only spent forty-seven thousand and some change. So at the end of this fiscal year, because we didn't spend it, it would roll back into unassigned fund balance. Which is why you see it kind of coming out of the, the balance for next year. But since we've already allocated it to roundabouts, streets, roads, et cetera. We can, we can opt with your consent to not have that roll back into unassigned fund balance and stay kind of reserved for streets, roads, roundabouts, et cetera. So I'm going to delete that that's coming out. And then I've also added in real time, three hundred and fifty thousand. Let's say you did decide to sort of reassign that from the land acquisition fund in here. And it does put us in a, a much better position.
I'm not in favor of doing that.
The land acquisition?
Yeah.
Any part of it or just not that much of it?
Nope. It's for land. It's not for roads. Because at some point we may want to do something with it and we may need that money. And to me, it's been put in that bucket for a reason.
Yeah, I would, I, I would agree with that. And, and I guess the question, you know, to, to my fellow council people is, you know, is there a portion? We saw what the issues are if we did it all from unassigned fund balance and rolling out the years. And certainly doesn't, that doesn't lead us to a very healthy position. But what percentage? Is it fifty? Is it twenty-five? If, if we were to, you know, kind of build a model around, if we were to take twenty-five percent of, of what our future needs are out of fund balance. Which should leave us still in a pretty healthy position. That'll change these numbers to then what we might also have to do. You know, with the consideration of that, we might extend the vehicle tax. And, and then the decision we have to make on, do we add a penny or two? You know, get everything funded that needs to be funded, you know, through, through that methodology. But, but where does everybody stand from using a percentage of the fund balance versus specific taxes?
I, I'm okay using a percentage. How much percent? I don't know. I got to look at the numbers. So, okay, we're going to, we're going to beat this to death if, I mean, and we've got, no, we've got a lot more on this agenda. We barely scratched the surface. So you guys need some sort of answer, some sort of direction. I'm fine with raising the vehicle tax to the max of thirty dollars. If you want a sunset at the end of this projection, whatever the date is, I'm great with that. I think you need to look at a percentage of the fund balance. Let's look at ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent. Give us the three different options. I don't think going over thirty percent sounds great to me. But let's just look at the numbers. Maybe it is. And then let's look at what a one, two, three cent increase would look like. Does that give you guys enough to come back to us with? Or does it give you too much?
Yes and no.
And no.
No. Um, I mean, it, yes, it gives us plenty to work with for us to go back and crunch some numbers.
I mean, as much as I want to look at the county reeval, we can't do it now. We don't know what the numbers are. We have to make a decision now. So let's make a decision now on what the information is and at the point that we get it, we can make another decision at that point. But as.
Can I just clarify, Russ, from my understanding? That the, the one to one and a half cent increase that you're talking about would be specifically for funding this roundabout and this project. And on top of whatever increase you all might decide you need to increase your operating budget. Okay.
In addition to, in order to do this roundabout, this specific roundabout.
Perfect. Thank you.
So clarity real quick on the vehicle, because we have it in your agenda packet as no sunset. You guys are now wanting a sunset. Is that what I'm hearing?
Sure. Sunset it at the end of this and then, and, and whoever's on council can make a decision.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that as well.
Yeah, let, let the council that's in place then make that decision because I, I don't want to make the decision for them.
So we're going to revise the vehicle ordinance that's in the agenda packet to have a sunset to end on June thirtieth of twenty, twenty-nine or twenty thirty?
Twenty thirty.
Okay. So if someone wants to just pull that from the consent agenda and then we can make that modification live at the time of. We can make the, the motion contingent upon a revised ordinance to reflect that sunset. Does that make sense to you, Austin? So when you get to consent, just remove that item and put it into wherever you guys want. I think we have our direction at this point. Does, you got, are you good? Okay.
All right, we're ready to move on. Next up, we have discussion consideration of funding off-duty coverage for the Waxahal Marvin and Bonds Grove intersection. Until the roundabout construction.
So that's, are you, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, that's going to be me. All right, in your agenda packets, you all asked me to table this to this meeting. I have revised the, I'll just rewind for a second. We've had some requests from the public to put off-duty coverage at the intersection of Waxahal Marvin and Bonds Grove until this roundabout is constructed. We've done a lot of research. We've asked the county, we've asked DOT, we've asked Waxahal to help provide funding for that. And they all have said unfortunately, no, for various reasons. So I have provided a table for you to see the total impact if we were to do this. There's a couple of different things you should consider. If you remember, we had issues with coverage at the roundabout of Newtown and Marvin for several months. Where we just weren't getting officers to fulfill those positions. We had to end up going up on the rate. So what you see here is a projected minimum. I would encourage you to at least. Consider an increase in, in the rates just for the coverage issues that we've seen in the past. So that would be an additional, I think it was eight thousand dollars per year. But what you see here is the breakdown per year until that roundabout is actually constructed. And we obviously can't absorb this within our operating budget, as mentioned with the other issues that we're looking at. So. For assuming three months coverage for this year, we'd need another twenty-one thousand dollars. And that's assuming some, someone could start pretty much immediately. Or three people could start. There is a minimum of three officers that would be needed at that intersection per the investigation of their supervisors. They want to make sure that they have three instead of two, and they do have a minimum. I did provide to you all the accident reports in your agenda packets. The majority of the hours between seven and nine, where they, all the accidents were majority occurring. So that's what we would recommend if you were going to do this. It would be during the morning hours with a projected twenty thousand needed for this year. For next year, we need another eighty to ninety. And then subsequent years would be around a hundred until it's completed, which would, was projected a half year in twenty-seven, twenty-eight because of.
And that's if the timing's right.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay. So where are we going to get the two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars?
We, we, I, I can't provide it anywhere in our operating budget. We'd have to go through the same discussions that we just had to find funding for the roundabout construction.
I mean, I, I mean, unfortunately, like, again, we don't have the money. If you guys want to raise taxes to put officers there, that's, you know, going to. I don't know.
That's the bottom line.
I would say.
Taxes to put the officers there.
I, I would say that it gets extremely less of an issue. When school gets out because the, the traffic there at that seven to nine hour, you know, that's, that's really when things get hairy. So I, I think we can, you know, given, given the financial challenges that we have to work through otherwise. I think we have a little time on this. My concern, safety first, of, of course, is that, you know, we, we are seeing the incidents. There's been like three over the last, you know, month or so. And they seem to be increasing with the impatience that.
So wait, with what? With what?
With the impatience that people have.
Aren't waiting.
You know, to, to be able to find a crack in the traffic during those hours.
But see.
That's really in the morning.
But John, we have to make a decision on this because our budget starts in July and you've got the whole year of twenty-four and twenty-five that's coming up now. So we, again, this, this.
I, I'm just saying we don't have to make it today.
No, we, we, but we, we do. We have to make a determination on this because our budget's coming up in July. We have to have our budget in and this, this eighty-five thousand, six hundred.
Yeah.
Is going to be for that, for that year. So we have to make a decision on this. And this again screams of the fact that the, the rock in the hard place that we, we've been in for years. Is you've got a, you've got some, I'm not saying all because it's unfair. You've got some that says no tax increase. Well, that's fine. That's a, that's a bridge you can, that's a hill you can stand on and do every day. But at some point in time, it's going to, it's already caught up to us. We're just the unfortunate group that has to deal with it. And, and here's the other thing, as I said before, we have to decide if we're going to kick the can down the road or we're going to be responsible and, and do it. Because this screams of the situation that we're in.
I, I agree with a hundred percent. I'm just saying, I don't think.
For this meeting, for every, for everyone that, for everyone that says no tax increase. And turns around and says, but I want this. Which one do you want? Because you can't have both.
Yeah.
And if you can, and if you can, and you can show us how, please come in. And, and, but, but sign up for, sign up for the fact that whatever you do, you're going to get the scrutiny and the wrath of the entire public.
Yeah, I, I one hundred percent agree.
That will not come in and say anything. They won't come in and tell you what's right and wrong. They'll share their opinions on social media because that's the way you build consensus.
Yeah.
So we're just going to have to do what, again. There you go.
I, I mean, I think this intersection, everybody's like, oh, we did it for, you know, the other ones. Well, the other ones, almost all of the, well, this one wasn't. But the, the one down here at Newtown Road, it was all in Marvin. I mean, there's other jurisdictions in play. So if people are not happy about it.
True, but what I do have to say is that the same traffic that's coming through that intersection is the same traffic that was going through the other Marvin intersections.
I don't disagree with that.
Whether they're in Marvin or not. So it's, it's the same traffic pattern.
I don't disagree with that at all. I, I absolutely agree with it. But my point is that you've got two corners of the county. We've got one corner. The county ought to be ponying up to help out there.
Understood.
And, and so if our constituents are frustrated, they should also be talking to the county. And they should be talking to the state because it is a state road. I, you know, we tried to take over that road, but, you know, that wasn't, that wasn't successful. So if you have a problem with that road, I would call the county and I would also call the state and call your state legislature.
And Waxahal has subdivisions on Bonds Grove Church Road that are assigned to Marvin Ridge. So they're all going to, to, to write through there as well. I'm just saying.
I agree.
I, I, I think we need to work through the rest of the budgeting process with the other priorities that we have and, and come. Notes, no? And we hope they come speak, reach out directly to us or speak to us at copy at council. And how important is it?
Yeah. And I mean, I would, if anybody's, you know, bringing it to council individually, I would also tell them, go ahead and reach out to the county and to the state. Because it's not just, it's, it's actually, it's not our responsibility because it's not our road, period. It's not our road.
And I'll agree with Kim. And we were told by all the people within eighteen hundred, some odd voters. That they don't want us to spend the money. They don't want us to have the roads. But I understand what you're saying too. They are residents and.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to make a decision today. I, I mean.
I think we need to think on it for a bit and we need to work it into our budget.
Well, we've got to look at the budget. We don't have the money to do it. We don't have the money.
It's a large sum of money over the next few years. And we have to really look at the budget impact because that's, I mean, that's, that's a reality, right?
So what's the, I guess, what's the direction to staff? Do you want to table it until a certain date?
No, we'll just, sometime in the summer after we've done the budget. Okay. I, I mean.
Well, well, actually, he, he makes a good point. Eighty-five thousand of that, we can't do that.
Because if you, it, because twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five budget is coming up. We've got to have, we've got to submit that budget and before July. That takes, so we have, we're going to have to fund, we're going to have to get the two hundred and some thousand dollars to fund that.
We, we, we really only need the eighty-five.
Eighty-five thousand dollars. So you got to, we've got a fund now. So we have to make that decision.
No, we don't. We don't have to.
I meant.
Yes or no is, is the decision.
What, we can't, we can't wait. In other words, we can't wait. We will not wait until August when school starts back to do this. Because then you're going to have to take every one of those funds out of fund balance, which we don't have, we don't have the money for fun, fun balance. So take care of it.
I, I was talking about starting it because, you know, I think on the draft that we had there, we had it actually starting in April, right? So when I meant delay, I didn't mean delay making a decision for next year's budget year. I meant delay starting it until like September, which would lower that eighty-five thousand dollars down. So it might be less than that, right?
No.
Because, because I thought when I looked.
Because in the first line, she had in there the twenty thousand that takes.
Okay, so, no, it would eliminate that twenty thousand.
Our budget starts in July for twenty-four, twenty-five. And we have to have the eighty thousand, I don't have the number in front of me now, the eighty, ninety thousand dollars to do that. That has to be in twenty-four, twenty-five. So we are, the eighty-five thousand, eighty-six thousand is going to have to be, we're going to have to make a determination on that before this budget.
I think what he's trying to get at, Jamie, is, is that, that we could save some of that eighty-five thousand if we don't start the deputy's coverage until September. When.
We'd save two months.
Save two months worth of deputy coverage. Not that we don't make the decision to, to budget it, but we might be able to save two months worth of, of monies out of that eighty-five, eighty-six thousand dollars.
All right. So I guess figure out how to put it into the budget. See how much it's going to, for a tax increase.
Yeah, I can go ahead and tell you it's going to be at least a half a penny.
Yeah.
Just for this project. So just from my understanding, in addition to what we just mentioned earlier.
Go ahead and figure out how much it's going to cost. Put it in as a light item.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
We have to consider it.
All right. Ready to move on? Reports and updates. Managers report.
I'm hesitant to even say this. So if you all recall, we did receive some great opportunities with the League of Municipalities to potentially seek funding for other sources. I have been working closely with some grant writers in a contract that we have with the League of Municipalities that's funded through ARPA. We have approximately thirty thousand dollars in a contract that we're not paying for. Person, the, the village is not paying for, to help us in, in various ways. One of the things and opportunities that we have discovered over the last couple of weeks is two potential grants. One is, it's called Safe Streets for All. It is to improve roadway safety, to eliminate fatalities and serious injuries. And they have a planning and implementation phase of those. We have some due dates of April fourth and March sixteenth. We are proceeding for an application on both of those. And there's another one that's called the Local Assistance for Stormwater Infrastructure Investment. That would help with some of the flooding that some of these neighborhoods might be seeing. We are going to move forward on an application on that as well, unless you guys want us to not. We, I, we, I don't, I have not had time to review any of that. We can always decide to reject the award if we receive it based on if it's reimbursable grant or not. But I, I can't answer that. No, that's next month. Yes. I'm sorry, May, May. Yes. I'm sorry, May, 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 May.
Are, are there significant application fees or anything like that?
There's no fees.
It's just staff time. That's, it's, it's a lot of staff time for grants. That's, that's the bottom line and it's, they've already got so much going on right now.
Yeah, I, I, I think we, I, I think we still, you know, pursue those type things.
And everything else that I've got is generally an agenda item, so. I'm done.
All right, um, you got your normal list in your agenda packets for the next month. Focusing especially on Marvin Day this month, you're gonna see a lot go out. A lot of individual emails focused on the different aspects of Marvin Day this year, the animal exhibits, the kids on the concert, the fireworks. Kind of what we do every year. Holiday posts, meetings, all the usual stuff as well. I guess all I'm asking for here is, is there anything else you want us to focus on this month with communications? If not, we're just gonna proceed as planned.
Proceed.
Are you getting, yeah, you getting much, are you getting? Are you getting much pushback from the HOAs that they don't want to forward your information?
I don't get responses.
You don't get any responses?
Get responses. I, I know.
You just send it. You send it to every HOA and you're hoping and praying that they do the right thing.
You, you got it. I get, I'll maybe get one response, um, the question or confirmation. I think, I know that, I think Firethorn has been sending it.
Well, I, I was told from my own HOA that that, that's too much work for you, for them to send that on, so.
I, then I'm.
Which, which I have an issue with, but I don't think it is. I, I, I assume it's a paste and click and forward to all the residents.
So let me, so let me, let me, let me be clear here. So the, the only means of communication that, I know, although we've set up the two, two coffee with council, we've set up the town halls, we've set up all this stuff. The only means of communication that the public is basically getting is through Nextdoor. No, no, I, I, now he sends his communications out, but when we have to communicate to the public, we, we send, we, he sends here. He sends this information here. Yes, he does a great job of getting that out through social media that way. Okay, but as far, as far as a two-way communication, it's done through Nextdoor. We just had community engagement class training. And every single municipality and city throughout the state of North Carolina has the same issues that we do. Is that they, they get, they get, um, they get beat up because of what the public thinks, thinks they, they want. Thinks they know, they know until they don't know, but you don't know until you actually come in and have a two-way conversation. So what's happening is, is now we live in a world of nobody wants to just have a, have a general conversation to resolve issues. We don't resolve issues, we just talk and gain consensus, gains consensus, which then thwarts the community against, against, uh, municipality on things that they really don't know. They don't know until they do know. So, you know, I, I don't, as all the other municipalities, not just Marvin, and throughout the state of North Carolina, is trying to address that issue. And until, until we can, again, Austin, I think I told Christine, Christina, if in any time in there, and if it can be just a singular message that goes out to the community that says, please, if you have any issues, concerns, questions, ideas, that you, solutions that you would like to address, please call staff and schedule a, schedule meeting time with one of the council members. I, I'm more than welcome because I think that's the only way we're gonna resolve issues is having true communication.
So you want essentially a post that says, we want your feedback.
Yeah, but, but, but again, you have done, you have, you have to be careful with that. I, nor this council or any municipality should take direction from, from social media. It should not happen. It will not happen.
Yeah, I'll add one thing. I've had more than one HOA president tell me they will not forward anything we send them because that's rubber stamping what, what's in the message. And they don't want to agree with us or they don't want to disagree with us, so they just don't send it out.
So put a disclaimer on it.
Don't blame the sender. It's a pretty benign thing that, that he sends out. It's mostly informational.
There, there's no way we're gonna get the infiltration of all the people unless we have cooperation with it. Because we rely on residents to sign up to get an email. Other than that, there's, I mean, it's not worth it effectively, cost effective to do mailers. We don't have the time for that.
Mailers are expensive.
Yep, exactly. And my point is, this is a click and paste, and guess what? You have a, you have a choice when you get that to either click on it or not click on it. If you want to get informed, click on it. If you don't, then don't click on it.
Just to come full circle, we absolutely can do a post to encourage people to set, schedule an appointment with staff, to call us with their concerns, their questions, feedback. Definitely can do that. It's very easy to do. You guys have on the agenda for May to reevaluate the practice of sending emails to HOA saying the meeting minutes are available. That's what we've been doing for the last few months. That will be on your agenda next month. Uh, and it'll be on your agenda in May to reconsider. I'll give you guys an update to whether people are actually responding, as of now, they are not. And we'll go from there. As far as any additional communications for April, do you guys have anything you want me to move forward with?
Nope, thank you, Austin.
Last thing for communications, we do have an external communications request pursuant to the policy that we have in place. Um, I do need to bring that to you all. You guys have previously decided that we do not fund nonprofits, but we are willing at times to, um, communicate on their behalf, and Hunter's gonna give you those details.
Um, and Joe, you may wanna, this is, uh, regarding the, uh, Theater Booster Club banner that they want. In short, they would like to post a banner for their upcoming, I guess, musical that will be held, uh, on, yep, April nineteenth and twentieth. They just want to do a banner, um, advertising that event here at Village Hall. Since it is the, the village's property, I just wanted to get consensus from the council before I do, you know, allow the permit.
Disclosure, my son is in that show, so, but I will not be voting.
What's our policy say?
So that, the, the policy is basically that council is allowed at their discretion to basically do the, um, any type of advertising through communication, if it's social media, I mean, signage, whatever. We have done this for like Marsh events before. And so.
I'm just, I can't say anything.
Is there, uh, do we have any, I mean, I don't know if they have a specific location on Village Hall property. You just want me to work with them to?
Put it on the corner. I just put the other banners.
I'll let them know.
Yeah, I, I agree that we shouldn't be doing, we shouldn't be spending the resources. If they want to put the signs on them, that's.
And to my knowledge, like, they're not asking us to put it up. They just want to confirm. Yeah, sounds good.
All right, so we have our direction on that. Uh, that is all I have for my report.
Thank you.
There was one. Yeah, Wayne, Wayne sent us, Wayne forwarded me an email last, yeah, forwarded me an email last night from a gentleman who thought his street was maintained by Marvin. It was not. It's DOT street. I just sent him the link as to where he can report a pothole. So.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Event.
Oh, no, sorry, I was on planners. Report. I didn't forget you. I'm sorry, Hunter.
The only, uh, update is, um, one about the Marvin Development Ordinance, uh, keep updating you guys on that. I do want to get with you two, uh, about coffee with council Tuesday night. Cause staff is putting together basically an, an FAQ to go basically to publish for when we call for the public hearing, um, at the April work session. Basically just trying to make sure the public understands what this is, what it's doing. Um, and, and how like the quote unquote like rezoning, I, I'm more qualified as reclassifying these properties to the new zoning district language, not necessarily, you're not being rezoned. But just, uh, staff's working on that. We have the rough draft done of that, um, FAQ, but I definitely want to get any potential questions, comments from council. I know it doesn't have to be right now. But any questions, comments from council that we may want to make sure that's included in the FAQ so it can be addressed. Any questions on that? Other than that, that's all I got unless you guys have any specific questions.
And, and we did have some conversation about that at coffee dot with council, so we'll, we'll download on that.
Yeah.
Can you talk about that in a minute? Next up, event planning report.
Hello. So Marvin Day, April twenty-seventh, four P M. It's coming up less than a month away. You guys, I believe everyone's RSVP'd to our meeting on the fifteenth regarding Marvin Day. That'll be eleven A M. that day. So thanks for getting back on that. Following Marvin Day on June first, we'll have our five K. It'll start at the elementary school over there. You can see, you'll look for it online here in the coming weeks. We have the registration going up. It'll be online registration. Um, you'll see the prices and it'll give you more details about packet pickup and all that. Following that, July twelfth will be our stargazing event out at the park. That will be a, um, registration required event. Uh, it'll be thirty-five dollars for residents, hundred and twenty-five for non-residents. It'll be at Eford Park, uh, starting at seven-thirty. That'll be a really cool event. We have a great volunteer from NASA coming out to really educate anyone who's interested, and it'll be a cool chance to look through a telescope and look at some neat things in the sky. Lastly, is proposing a date of September twenty-first for a cornhole tournament. To get something going in the month of September. That's the day before the first day of fall. Still have a pretty long day, thinking like eleven or twelve start time that day. Do forty dollars a team, um, just to host a little tournament out of Eford Park.
Can you do, there's a David that's doing an update on the park and where we're at, because I just learned yesterday maybe that, uh, the full new playground stuff is gonna be, uh, available?
I can, I can do that. The, the full playground, the, the larger playground's open. We're still waiting on a couple of punch lists and ADA compliance items to be reconciled on the smaller tot lot. So we're working on it. I don't have an exact date yet, but it's in the works.
Okay. And, and, and before that event, refresh my memory on the parking for the ADA.
Yes, so in your agenda packets, you have an update on that item actually, so we'll, we'll get to that in just a second.
Any events questions?
No.
Michael, thank you all.
Okay, so here's what we've been.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I, I, we actually removed it. Um, we are not doing the parking. We have an update at the next meeting on that, but we are going to do a stormwater proposal for the entire parking area to be paved before we move forward on that.
Next up, we have coffee with council debrief.
So, uh, Andy and myself, uh, had the opportunity to have coffee with council. We had a pretty good turnout. Um, there were probably about twenty folks plus another, uh, ten or so, um, boy scouts that were there with, uh, Cub Scouts with, with assorted parents. So, the, the first ten minutes or so, we, we spent some time with the, uh, Cub Scouts. We, we discussed a little bit about, you know, uh, what our function is from a, from a local government standpoint, what our roles were as council people, talked about what a mayor does and election cycles. And then, then we went around the table and, and had the opportunity for each of the scouts to ask a question if they'd like, and, and we got some pretty good questions from them and, and, uh, I also invited them. I, I know sometimes we offer to let them do the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of a meeting or, or something like that, so we did extend the invitation to them to be able to do that.
One, uh, one thing that I was, I was really impressed actually with one of the scout's questions, and it was, you know, if, what would be the path that I should take if I want to serve my community in, in our capacity as, when he becomes an adult? And I thought that that was, uh, was a very responsible question. Somebody who cares about their community and wants to serve their community in the future. We kind of gave him a little bit of guidance, gave him, him some, some suggestions on, on some of the paths that he could take.
Keep your grades up and beta club.
Beta club, but also stay in, in scouts because I, my, myself and my son were both in the scouts program and, um, my, my wife actually was the, uh, the, the PAC twenty leader uh, while my son was in there. And I, I, I know that, that past councils and this council is very supportive of the scout program. Um, we've done a lot of, um, joint efforts with Eagle, Eagle Scout projects. And, um, I think it's a great program that teaches leadership, um, qualities and, uh, so I was very supportive of that myself, so that was good.
The, uh, next item that we probably spent the most time on, um, explaining is, uh, giving a better understanding of the U D O and the use tables especially. And, you know, some of the reasoning behind what the purpose is and, and why we're looking to go to, to that type of development ordinance. And you, you know, we really took time to explain to them about the use tables. How essentially what you want to do with that use table is, is put everything that you could possibly have a, a property owner or developer come to you under the sun, some of which are state mandated. We don't have a choice. We have to put those in there. And, and then really, you know, explaining to them, to the fact out of those eight, those ten different categories of different types of, you know, zoning areas or, or, or use areas that the intent with Marvin is really only to move all that's in Marvin right now into really those four districts, the residential, the, um, uh, heritage, the civic, and there was one other. The, or, yeah, the rural agricultural. You know, and that the intent would be that it would help to protect the village moving forward from litigation and things like that, from property owners or developers by, by being able to make much more objective decisions than subjective decisions. So that, that was a big part of it. Um, we did talk about the preserve connector again and, uh, just FEMA flood zones in general. We discussed the fact that we're taking on new studies and, and continuing to look not just at that particular area but all of the potential areas with our master plan or otherwise, as they could be affected by those type of zones, whether it's flood plain or, um, you know, uh, the, the actual creeks, things like that, that, you know, all of them have different rules and, and ordinances and, and requirements around them. Uh, we talked about, uh, the roundabout funding. There were a couple of folks that were very concerned about the, um, intersection there and, and some of the recent uptick in, in some accidents that have gone there. We explained to them that, as we discussed here today, that we're looking at the ways that we could potentially continue to fund that, that it is a priority that we have set. Uh, we've already put things in motion with some of the monies we've outlaid and, um, we'll, we'll continue to, to kind of work through that process of how we fund it. Um, we did talk about, uh, the safety issues related to that. We talked a lot about the, the heritage district. You know, and, and some people think that's kind of a new part of the U D O process kind of coming in. So, you know, we, we had to also kind of discuss a little bit about how the, the heritage district was, has kind of already come into being, you know, through approvals that happened a couple of years ago. So what the U D O is doing now is it's just taking what's kind of already there and reclassifying it into, you know, how, how it would work within the, uh, U D O. And we talked again about some of the different uses in that chart and, and things like that. There was one concern that a resident brought up, um, specifically about, um, any ordinances that, um, might be affected. If you have a restaurant or a bar in specific location to a church. We, um, we reassured that person that, you know, we'll be working, you know, with the developer with all to make sure that all ordinances, everything like that. And, and that a lot of this is controlled by the liquor board as well, you know, the state liquor board, so. Um, we'll, we'll continue to make sure that we do our due diligence and make sure that we're in compliance with all of those type things.
Did you get a chance to discuss about other communities that are going through this process and, or did you just focus on, on Marvin? Because it, it is happening.
Yeah.
Across the state and it, it's, you know, I mean, municipalities need to protect themselves and that's.
When we were talking about the purpose, we did share that a lot of this is in, in reaction to some changes in the state guidelines and ordinances that are forcing municipalities, including us and others, that, that are moving to this type. and ordinances that are forcing municipalities, including us and others, that, that are moving to this type of thing. Just because especially for smaller municipalities like us, you get into some of these serious litigations with developers with bottomless pockets and things like that. You know, it can, it can continue to be, you know, from a legal perspective, a, a, a great, you know, draw on, on staff resources, on our financial resources, all of those things. So we, we did address it to, to that effect, that it's really a reaction to, to some of the changes that the state has done. And, and, and it affects the municipalities like us where they're, they're trying to squeeze some of the power, you know, from, from the municipalities and, and put it more in the, the property owners and developers. But what that's leading to is, is us using these type ordinances to be able to manage it with, through, through the means with which we, we can best do that and, and justify. There was a question about the heritage district. Can it be dissolved? What, what is already zoned and what's not zoned? So we explained a little bit about that, that, you know, this, this isn't really deciding whether we're going to have a heritage district or not. That ship's already kind of passed a while ago. The question came up, well, can it be dissolved through this UDO process? And we said, well, not really, because, you know, we've now laid out a plan that, you know, people are making investments and things like that based on, based on that. And you could open up yourself for, for lawsuits, you know, kind of subjectively doing things like that as well. So the Zepsa property, that's the one that we mentioned, you know, there are churches nearby. Ways to, it also came up and it came up in, in a meeting previously. And the question came up about how council, when we hear feedback from the public, how we can kind of put that into note so that future staff, future councils, when there's inevitable turnover can be alerted, you know, to, to certain specific controversial issues or issues that we've said, well, you know, we're just not going to do this at this point, you know? But, you know, we reserve our rights to do it in the future in some cases, you know? And, you know, I, I think there was a, a remark made at one of our previous meetings where, where they said, they were talking about the Bonds Grove Connector with Deb Barry. And she was saying, well, can't you just put a note on that? It's fine for you to say you won't develop it, but what about future councils? And I said, well, it, it's almost like when we have the discussion about social media and, 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 and actual meetings. We can't conduct the village's business over social media. That's why it's important that we have these conversations with, within the means that we do here. And I think it's important that we're not adding, you know, asterisks or specific state, you know, talking statements to, to things, you know, that, that we're not making, you know, judgments on. But that, that's already, you know, codified as part of the process in the minutes that we do in the, you know, in the specific ordinances and how we word them and things like that. But Andy, anything else that, that you can think of?
I think you pretty much covered it.
Well, I've heard from some that you guys did a really nice job in answering some questions and even, you know, got, hopefully the public understand a little better about how some of these processes, whether it's UDO or heritage district, can't just dissolve it and concerns that we would.
Yeah.
Be looking at.
A, a, and I think it was in special, especially important to, to relay the reasonings behind that table of uses and stuff. Because we've been directed to social media posts that are talking about us now allowing massage parlors and, you know, all sorts of things.
Were the Boy Scouts still there when you were discussing?
No, no, we cleared them out before.
Why should I give it a minute? For the one that wants to be a, a, a council member, maybe to stay off of social media.
Yeah, but that, we, we wanted to focus kind of to that, you know, at, at one point to make sure people understood that. There are, I mean, council could make decisions to do something to allow something like that now, you know?
Right.
With, with our current processes. Now, we've never done that and I don't know of anybody here that has an intent to. So I, I think it's important to understand that number one. And then when we look to this new ordinance and, and some of those things, like we said, are specifically state mandated. It's, it's very important to make sure that they know that the reason it has to be on there is that it's so we can control it, you know? And we can control it by making objective decisions, not subjective ones.
Yeah, and I, I just want to, I, I want to comment though, that I was, I was very pleased to see that, that, that we are getting people coming in and talking to us and giving us their comments and such. I was, you know, I, we've said this before, there's been many coffee with council meetings that it's been two council members just, you know, talking about their day because there's nobody else there. I was very encouraged by the, the turnout. There were a lot of good questions asked. There was, there were good discussions. And I, I feel like that when people left, they had a better understanding of some of the things that were, are going on. And I, I, I feel good about that. I feel good about the communication is starting to get better. And, and this is, this is what we, this is what we're striving for is better communication with the public. Getting their, their views and their, their, you know, their, their questions so they understand things. So I was, I was pretty pleased with the meeting and I'd like to see more meetings go with, with, with the larger attendance and, and, you know, people staying on top of things and.
It's encouraging.
Talking many. Yeah. It's very encouraging.
So, yep. Well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it for that update. Next up, we have the consent agenda, but we have, did you, we're removing something, correct?
No, he's updated the ordinance already in the consent agenda. So you can, if you want to review it, there is a sunset listed now on that vehicle tax, vehicle tag fee for fiscal year 30. It's listed at the very bottom of the ordained section. If you want to review it real quick before you approve that consent.
I can pull that up on the screen.
We can look at it.
It says that to the very bottom of the ordinance, it's now says be it further ordained that the sunset clause from ordinance 2022-0502 is hereby amended to sunset on June 30th, 202030. That was the only change.
Which, which I remember was that?
That is consent agenda item number six, discuss and consider adoption of an ordinance extending the municipal vehicle tag fee.
So where's the sunset? Okay. Anyone have any questions, concerns about that? Hearing none, I will ask a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion, all's in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes. Moving on to unfinished, everyone okay? We need.
No, we need to take a break.
Okay.
Lunch is here too.
Oh, take a quick break and then we're doing a working lunch at home. Okay, so quick break, five minute recess. Ten minute recess and you have a hard stop at 12:30. All's, all's in favor? I didn't realize it was a motion on table. Thank you.
All right, next up unfinished business, number one, discussing consideration adoption of fiscal year 25 to 29 capital improvement plan. Christina, it looks like it's Jill, but Christina.
Okay, I'll take it, I can handle it. So in your agenda packets, this is the second time you've seen this, there's a 25 to through 29. Capital Improvement Plan, again, this is just a plan, it is not a budget, I will reiterate for those listening at home, this is a planning document that helps us guide our long-term planning and our budgeting preferences. It allows staff the opportunity to show you things that we think are relevant, and it also plugs in some of the listed priorities that you all have designated as priority to move forward and trying to find funding. It also assists us in when we are seeking grant funding for these projects to be in our capital improvement plan so that the grantors can see that we are working diligently to put these things into play. Again, this is not a budget, it is a planning document for our own internal purposes and for when we are seeking grant funding. We are asking for y'all to approve this today, if you want to, if you don't want to, we can amend it and bring it back at a later date, there was not, there is nothing pressing that requires us to adopt this today, tomorrow, or the next day.
There's definitely stuff on here that does not even, I mean, like, the wayfinding.
We can, we can move that, take it off.
We were doing that with the, with the bond money, I wouldn't necessarily take it off, but I might.
Kick it down the road.
Yeah, kick the can down the road.
So when, we're gonna let the departments come up and present theirs, I think Davey presented his at the last meeting, so unless y'all have other questions. Then we can come back and amend those things that you want to. No, I mean, whenever you see something that you want to push down the road, we'll just do that live, and then we'll bring it back to you all for adoption at a later date, like the wayfinding, for example. So first up, let's just, Davey, if you don't mind coming to the podium, just, he presented his, but the only thing that he has in his budget for next year, at least, I'm sorry, I should repeat that. The only thing that he has in his capital improvement plan that we are looking to put in the budget for next year is the lakeside corridor enhancement and the vehicle purchase. This is a second vehicle, or third vehicle. If you can explain the need for the vehicle, that would be great, real fast.
All right, so we have, we do have one vehicle currently, we have another one on order that should be, we should be receiving very fairly soon. This vehicle here would actually give, it'd be the third vehicle. That gives us one operation vehicle to handle all the maintenance items, and in one vehicle for superintendent and one for the public works director. So that we would not be sharing the vehicle in going in cases where we need to go opposite directions, I could be addressing customer issues, one area, Marvin, he would be in other, so it just gives us an opportunity, more flexibility in our department to address issues quickly.
I will, I will say that we currently have one vehicle, there's no way at all that any of them share it, our operational staff, our grounds crew use it 24/7. There's been periods where I've had to send Davey and Matt at the same time, there's been periods where we've actually had, in his own personal vehicle, he goes into the subdivisions. People don't know what the suspicious guy's out, there's no markings on his car, obviously, it's his personal vehicle.
He does look shady.
We've, we've had.
We can get you a big lightbulb.
When, when our staff is out in the community taking pictures of people's, maybe not houses, but, but roads that look like he's taking pictures of houses, it is weird. People have reported to the police officers before, we had a previous employee where they called the police on him because he was out taking photos of what was legitimate business, and it looks weird to people, so. Let's, just, I'm just putting that out there.
I think that's, we could get away with a used vehicle would last us several years for this purpose.
What's the lakeside corridor enhancement?
That's a, a plan to install or construct a restroom facility at the very end of the park, down near the cover shelter area.
I would rather push that, I'd rather kick that can down the road. What's the 15, and then what's the 80?
15 is the engineering cost to have it engineered and designed, and then the 80 would be the construction cost.
And is it because people can't walk up to the other bathroom?
It's just a, it's a pretty good distance between the lower picnic shelter, which we do rent out.
I mean, it is a distance, did, did we look into John's remarks on, at the last meeting about the septic system that may already exist there?
We've not had a chance to look into that.
Because I would suggest, because that's a, that's a significant cost in, in this proposal, so I would.
That would, that would actually be something that the engineer, so the 15,000 that he's requesting is for engineering studies to be done, to either give us some construction drawings, to analyze what's existing that could make it easier, so that would be part of the planning, the 15,000 that we've, we've got planned here. The 15,000 has nothing to do with the actual construction itself.
Yeah, and I, I know it may not be easy to get to, but I recall renderings and so forth from, from back at the time that we were demolishing the house in, in where those septic fields were planned and stuff like that, so.
So if you all do not want to consider the bathroom installation in the next couple of years, we can take the 80,000, move it to 26, 27, and then the 15 into next year, is that, is that what I'm hearing, or do you guys want us to proceed with the engineering studies?
That's what I want to do, but I'm one vote.
Yeah, I mean, I, given where we are financially at the moment, I think it would be prudent to, to, to push that improvement, because it's not a need, it's a want. So I would say, yeah, to kick it a year out and see where we are at that point.
Move them down both one year. So aside from that, are there any other questions, so he, she's actually doing this live, we will have this on your next meeting for consideration with the changes that we're making now. What, in the budget meeting? I'm sorry? Yes?
And, and when we just said both, do we mean the engineering and the construction, or are we throwing in the truck request as well?
Engineering and construction.
Okay, so, so we already moved on, there's the truck, okay.
So the only thing that Davey would be requesting into next year's fiscal year is the vehicle purchase of a used vehicle of $30,000. Are there any further questions for Davey?
So, Davey, on your, the detail for your CIP, it also has, some of that 15,000 was to be spent on landscaping improvements around the picnic shelter. Do we have a dollar amount for that, and are we pushing that off as well?
I think we need to push that off as well, because it's, we maintain that currently.
Are there any other questions for Davey? I think you're good, Davey, thank you. So up next is parks and recreation, I can pretty much handle this, but if you want to come up in case they have any questions. Park amenities, I actually can't answer that, I knew, I do know that that's something that we've had on the CIP for quite some time, and it's just general volleyball court, Gaga ball, just general amenities that we could add to the park to improve kind of the service opportunities that we have.
Kick it down the curb.
Yep, again, it's a, it's a want, not a need, and with our current financial situation, I think that we need to push it out.
We'll bounce that down one year, we'll have the same discussion next year.
Same, councils in agreement.
Everybody good? And then, and then the, the heritage park, pocket park is in here for future years, just so you are aware, it's nothing we're asking for next year, it's just the fact that at some point in the near future, Jones Homes is donating a portion of property to us, and we need to start planning long-term for something on that area, what that something is, I have no clue. But it's in our plans for, for later years, do you have any comments?
From a planning standpoint, the developer will be installing a trail network that runs through the, their 100-foot buffer, so you will have like quote-unquote trail connectivity. Basically, it's running along the whole front of their development to the side property line close to South Carolina, and all the way down towards Meadowlark. And then they are putting in a portion, which this is probably where we want to do some of the, in some of the planning process, to the roundabout, so you'll have like that sidewalk connectivity, or walkability, so that's where some of this planning comes in, because we, if we don't necessarily want to maybe do, you know, right through the middle, and, I mean, we can always move it, but I just want to at least make you guys aware of all that.
I think that's, I think some of that stuff should be, you know, PRG and planning board looking at some of these things, far as what we're looking at today, you know, that, that money being down the road is probably prudent at this point.
All right, so we'll move that back one year, we'll have the same discussion next year, and we can push it back further or keep it on. Is everybody good with that?
I am.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm talking about the park amenities, the heritage park, we'll leave it where it's at.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Tyler? Okay, thank, thank you. And next up is admin, as you all know, wayfinding is listed here, $200,000, several years down the road, again, this is not a budget, we are not budgeting this, this is something that was planned in our master plan for wayfinding, and therefore, we put it in here for y'all to consider at this point in time. I know that you want to kick this down the road based on just not wanting to spend this, but we need to know how far down the road, do you want to hear this, this discussion again next year?
For myself, I think we need to go to 28 on this one, because realistically, we have the expense of the, of the roundabout, which is going to pretty much eat up every little bit of money that we have, you know, extra for the next several years, so I don't think wayfinding is a priority over that, so I think we need to push it past that.
Okay, is that the consensus of everyone? 2028, we won't bring this up again? It'll, it'll, I'm sorry, 2027?
Can, can we still ask DOT to change that Marvin sign out as you come into Marvin?
We're changing, we're changing that out.
Thank you.
We've, we've got signs procured, we're just, we haven't had time to do any of that, we've, but it's in, it's in his queue. Yeah, we're doing, we're doing all of them.
Thank you.
Is, is there a consensus to move that to fiscal year 27, 28?
Agreed.
So it'll still be in your capital improvement plan for that year, it's just you guys won't have this discussion again until 27, 28, unless y'all want to talk about it further. All right, Laserfish, as you all heard from Austin at the retreat, this is basically a record-keeping software that helps make life easier for us. It is something that he requested, you can see the agenda, I'm sorry, the detail inside of this plan, it is something that we put in the budget that has been cut, I'm not recommending it at this point in time unless you all want to.
A question I'd have is, you know, we've been getting these number of different FOIA requests that affect council, you know, a lot of staff time, I mean, it's been really unbelievable. Would this system, from a record-keeping standpoint, help in the discovery, like, does this record system just take hard copy records, does it, does it archive emails from specific email accounts of council and stuff? Where we would have a central repository to search for FOIA requests, because that does seem to be a significant issue these days.
You do, you do enter physical and digital records into this system, to my knowledge, this does not include email, email is Microsoft. Emails, so when you enter a record into this type of system, when you have your system built out, it'll automatically assign those records that you're entering a required retention period. Emails are different, they are not retained, there's no retention period for emails.
People don't know what the suspicious guy's out. There's no markings on his car, obviously. It's his personal vehicle.
He does look shady.
We've, we've had. When, when our staff is out in the community taking pictures of people's, maybe not houses, but, but roads that look like he's taken pictures of houses. It is weird. People have reported it to the police officers before. We had a, a previous employee where they called the police on him because he was out taking photos of what was legitimate business and it looks weird to people. So let's just, I'm just putting that out there.
I think that's we could get away with a, a used vehicle would last us several years for this purpose.
What's the lakeside corridor enhancement?
Uh, that's a, an I, a plan to, uh, install or construct a restroom facility at the very end of the park, uh, down near the cover shelter area.
I, I would rather push that. I'd rather kick that can down the road. What's the 15 and then what's the 80?
15 is the engineering cost to have it engineered and, uh, designed. And then the 80 would be the construction cost.
And is it because people can't walk up to the other bathroom?
It's just a, uh, it's a pretty good distance between the lower picnic shelter, which we do rent out.
Did we look into, um, John's remarks on, at the last meeting about the septic system that may already exist there?
We've not had a chance to, to look into that.
Cause I would suggest, cause that's a, that's a significant cost in, in this proposal. So I would.
That would, that would actually be something that the engineer, so the 15,000 that he's requesting is for engineering studies to be done to either give us some construction drawings to analyze what's existing that could make it easier. So that would be part of the planning, the 15,000 that we've, we've got planned here. The 15,000 has nothing to do with the actual construction itself.
Yeah. And I, I, I know it may not be easy to get to, but I, I recall renderings and so forth from, from back at the time that we were demolishing the house i- i- in where those septic fields were planned and stuff like that. So.
So if you all do not want to consider the bathroom installation in the next couple of years, we can take the 80,000, move it to 26, 27, and then the 15 into next year. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? Or do you guys want us to proceed with the engineering studies?
That's what I want to do, but I'm one vote.
Yeah. I mean, I, given where we are financially at the moment, I think it would be prudent to, to, to push that improvement. Um, because it's not a need, it's a want. Um, so I would say, yeah, to kick it a year out and see where we are at that point.
Move them down both one year. So aside from that, are there any other questions? So he, she's actually doing this live. We will have this on your next meeting for consideration with the changes that we're making now. What, in the budget meeting? I'm sorry? Yes.
And, and when we just said both, do we mean the engineering and the construction or are we throwing in the truck request as well?
Engineering and construction.
Okay. So, so we already moved on there's the truck. Okay.
So the only thing that Davey would be requesting into next year's fiscal year is the vehicle purchase of a used vehicle of $30,000. Are there any further questions for Davey?
So Davey, on your, uh, the detail for your CIP, it also has some of that 15,000 was to be spent on landscaping improvements around the picnic shelter. Do we have a dollar amount for that? And are we pushing that off as well?
I think we need to push that off as well because it's, we've maintained that currently.
Are there any other questions for Davey? I think you're good, Davey. Thank you. So up next is parks and recreation. I can pretty much handle this, but if you want to come up in case they have any questions. Park amenities, I actually can't answer that. I knew, I do know that that's something that we've had on the, um, CIP for quite some time, and it's just general volleyball court, Gaga ball, just general amenities that we could add to the park to improve kind of the service opportunities that we have.
Kick it down the curb.
Yep. Again, it's a, it's a want, not a need. And with our current financial situation, I think that we need to push it out.
We'll bounce that down one year. We'll have the same discussion next year.
Yeah. Same councils in agreement.
Everybody good? And then, and then the, the heritage park, pocket park is in here for future years, just so you are aware. It's nothing we're asking for next year. It's just the fact that at some point in the near future, Jones Holmes is donating a portion of property to us and we need to start planning long-term for something on that area. What that something is, I have no clue. Um, but it's in our plans for, for later years. Do you have any comments?
From a planning standpoint, the developer will be installing a trail network that runs through the, uh, their hundred foot buffer. Um, so you will have like quote unquote trail connectivity. Um, basically it's running along the whole front of their development to the uh, side property line close to South Carolina and all the way down towards Meadowlark. And then they are putting in a portion, which this is probably where we want to do some of the, in some of the planning process to the roundabout. Um, so you'll have like that sidewalk connectivity, um, or, or walkability. So that's where some of this planning comes in. Cause we, if we don't necessarily want to maybe do, you know, right through the middle. And I mean, we can always move it, but I just want to at least make you guys aware of all that.
I think that's, I think some of that stuff should be, uh, you know, PRG and planning board looking at some of these things. As far as what we're looking at today, um, you know, that, that money being down the road, um, is probably prudent at this point.
All right. So we'll move that back one year. We'll have the same discussion next year and we can push it back further or keep it on. I- is everybody good with that?
I am.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm talking about the park amenities. The heritage park will leave it where it's at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Any questions for Tyler? Okay. Thank, thank you. And next up is admin. Um, as you all know, wayfinding is listed here. $200,000 several years down the road. Again, this is not a budget. We are not budgeting this. This is something that was planned in our master plan for wayfinding and therefore we put it in here for y'all to consider at this point in time. I know that you want to kick this down the road based on just not wanting to spend this, but we need to know how far down the road. Do you want to hear this, this, this discussion again next year?
For myself, I think we need to go to 28 on this one because realistically we have the, the expense of the, of the roundabout, which is going to pretty much eat up every little bit of money that we have. You know, extra for the next several years. So I don't think wayfinding is a priority over that. So I think we need to push it past that.
Okay. Is that the consensus of everyone? 2028, we won't bring this up again. It'll, it'll, I'm sorry, 2027.
Can we still ask DOT to change that Marvin sign out as you come into Marvin out?
We're changing, we're changing that out.
Thank you.
We, we've, we've got signs procured. We're just, we, we haven't had time to do any of that. We've, but it's in, it's in his queue. Yeah. We're doing, we're doing all of them.
Thank you.
Is, is there a consensus to move that to fiscal year 27, 28?
Agreed.
So it'll still be in your capital improvement plan for that year. It's just you guys won't have this discussion again until 27, 28 unless y'all want to talk about it further. All right. Laserfish, um, as you all heard from Austin at the retreat, this is basically a record keeping software that helps make life easier for us. Um, it is something that he requested. You can see the agenda, I'm sorry, the detail inside of this plan. It is something that we put in the budget that has been cut. I'm not recommending it at this point in time unless you all want to.
A, a question I'd have is, you know, we've been getting these number of different FOIA requests that affect council, you know, a lot of staff time. I mean, it's been really unbelievable. Would this system from a record keeping standpoint, um, help in the discovery? Like, does this record system just take hard copy records? Does it, does it archive emails from specific email accounts of council and stuff? Where we would have a central repository to search for FOIA requests because that does seem to be a, a significant issue these days.
I, uh, you do, you do enter physical and digital records into this system. To my knowledge, this does not include email. Email is Microsoft. Um, emails. So when you enter a record into this type of system, when you have your system built out, it'll automatically assign those records that you're entering a required retention period. Emails are different. They are not retained. There's no retention period for emails. It completely depends on what is being talked about in the email. So it's not, it's not a record that could be easily entered and definitely would not be done automatically.
It require, the, the program itself requires user input. So if I have a contract, I'm going to put it into the system. It's going to know, uh, cause it's going to know what it is.
You have to archive it in a place.
And then it's going to, it's going to reference our records retention schedule, records retention and disposition schedule. And it's going to say, all right, you have to keep this contract for four years and then it'll send an alert to me.
And different things, maybe six years or seven.
So you have to put it in. If you don't put it in, then you know, it doesn't get saved. It doesn't get done.
It would become part of our internal processes for, for whenever we have a contract that's been signed off on before, when it gets filed away.
And that's just an example. A contract is just an example.
Yeah.
But everybody's going to put every piece of piece, piece of paper in the system in order for it to be retained.
Now, I'm aware though, that a lot of these systems are similar systems to laser fish do take.
Hang on, John, hang on. I'm going to make a motion to excuse Jamie Lyon at 12:14.
President of discussion, all's in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, but what I was saying is that my understanding of these systems is that they have the, the ability to automatically intake all emails from Microsoft Outlook and stuff like that.
Maybe it does. That's a feature I'm not familiar with, but that's not something I've asked about either.
And, and the reason I'd ask is just because all these FOIA requests, right? So if we had one central database, you just run those keywords through those.
This system is used by a lot of towns in North Carolina, uh, Waxaw included. They've used this for many years.
The, the unfortunate thing with that is we would have to, if, if that did work out, there's still emails that I might have with Chaplain. It's subject to attorney client privilege that even if it's a keyword search, we would still have to physically go through it and pull out some of that privileged information. So again, this is something that he's asking for. I am not making a recommendation for approval. We can have this conversation again next year. If you guys are okay with withdrawing that request.
Yeah. I, I, I would say let's delay it a year, but, but I think in light of the, the challenges around FOIA requests and stuff, we, we do continue to research and look into it because I'd hate to invest in a platform that, that limits us for some of the things that'll help us in the future.
And the last thing I'll say is if you were to do this kind of system in the future, you can build off on it with future expansions, which can include online permitting processes, all sorts of forms. And once those are submitted by residents, those would automatically go into the system too.
Yep.
And then the last thing that's in the admin total is the village hall park. As you all recall, we're currently in a million dollar, uh, part F contract. Uh, this was projected to be kind of phase two, which is the amphitheater itself. If you remember, we had discussions back in 2022, if I remember correctly, at our retreat where we had our consultant McAdams come in to discuss the part F application and then potentially the phase two, which resulted in an estimate from them at 3.7 million dollars for the amphitheater structure itself. So that's where this number comes into play. I think what I've heard from the public and from council is we want to push this down the road. We just want to know how far you guys want to push it. So we can adjust accordingly.
I'd push it, uh, I, I would leave it in 25, 26 and just let us re, reevaluate it next year.
Agree.
Two and two.
Agree.
All right.
Um, and that's, that's all for admin. Are there any other questions for those three that you just heard? All right. Then next one is going to be Hunter for planning and zoning. I'll have him come up and speak real quick to the heritage district and the annexation consultant.
So yeah, the two items being requested is one is the, uh, Marvin Heritage District's, uh, master plan. This plan would basically be a plan done and that takes into consideration, gets all information of, you know, for, for utility. Road improvement, sidewalk, uh, as well as taking the ordinance and kind of creating that vision further. And then any other kind of goals or recommendations identified out of that, potentially how we can achieve this vision. If, if council, you know, that does put this in the budget and staff will start working on an RFQ, uh, or RFP for, uh, for consulting for the plan and then probably have a kickoff at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Would that include parking, shared parking, stuff like that as well?
Yeah. Basically what the master plan will do is where we have, what is it? 13 different properties. You know, every single property owner, when this district was kind of being created prior to, to me, uh, starting with the village was kind of taking in their own individual visions. And what this would do is then kind of shape that into one unified vision, um, and, and basically give that visual representation of that. It will talk about parking needs, uh, you know, potential, uh, recommended uses, all types of stuff. I mean, stuff that's, we're already kind of addressing in the, the MDO. But at the same time, a way that, you know, we have a document and when a property owner or developer comes in, that's wants to submit a rezoning application when that's kind of their visionary guide. Um, this is also the opportunity to kind of really build on those elevations and, and, um, design standards, uh, that we would want. So we have kind of visual clarification as well as material clarification in this plan. But, but yeah, it would take in all consideration of that. Most of the time these are done for like one development, like a master development. Like if this was all under one property, this is what we would do. So then we have a common plan to reference. It's just, we are kind of taking in some variables with some, uh, different property owners. So try to get the best we can out of it.
Well, I'll just make this comment. While I appreciate the, uh, the, the, the idea here, I think council in the past has very clearly stated that we don't want to throw money at planning for the heritage district. We wanted the, uh, the, the individuals to, to, to bring to us what they were going to do. Um, cause we, we talked about a master plan initially when we started this process and we, we all decided that we, that was not. Yeah. And, and we didn't want to go down that road. So I think that, um, for myself, I think I still stand on that, that idea. Um, I'm not, I'll speak for us to council, but that's from my position. So anybody else?
I'm mixed on it. Um, because I do think that having a master plan is a good planning tool. And instead of having each individual parcel look different, I mean, this is what we talked about seven years ago. This way there would be some conformity to it. There would be conformity with the sidewalks, with the, with the lighting, with the things that, you know, there are some things that we'll end up having to maintain because it's, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm, I have very mixed feelings about it, to be honest with you.
Would it be beneficial for me to get some examples slash some kind of information, like an umbrella of what all would be included in the plan? Okay.
I mean, it would, it would be for me because I am, I mean, I, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Andy, but with what Joe and I had talked about years ago, having a master plan to have it look to be more conformed and having one place for, for these landowners to go to for a resource. It's not much different than what we're doing with the UDO. It's just more focused if, if that's a good description of it. So again, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. I, I don't know. I just, I feel like, I feel like this would be really helpful. Is, as, as we know, we are going to start having more rezoning requests coming in that there's more of a.
Is there a way you could offer like a fee in lieu when the developer comes in for the heritage and that they can go towards some of this?
Well, can we not? If we do an overlay, because we've always talked about doing a tax overlay in the heritage district. I mean, that can be used. I mean, not that we're doing it now. We have to front, front the money for it, but it could be used for that.
Yeah. So, and, and that's the thing is like the master plan, as, as Kim was kind of saying, was, is a long-term planning document. And we can kind of set up what those parameters mean. I'm not saying like what my goal would be to get out of it because we've already got one or two rezonings technically that have been, been approved with the residential portion and then the, the ZEPs at project last year. Uh, you know, you've already kind of started to get that base. Um, and so this will kind of help with guide with some of the infill in between. Uh, as well as the long-term kind of vision of the area, if that includes, you know, landscape, lighting, um, streetscape, all that stuff. So there's a lot that goes into this document that will be utilized even past these developments actually being built. It's not actually like taking each develop, like site and kind of developing it out. That's still on the applicant and, and their developer. But it does kind of give them some vision, visual representation of what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah. Would, would you say that it's really kind of laying out what, what the vision is for a common scheme of development?
Yes, for the.
And, and to what extent would it address that, which is really the front end versus, you know, the ongoing, you know, maintenance of, of whatever that is.
Yeah. I mean, I think the, the majority of it would be probably a lot front end. It's going to have some, um, some guide, uh, guidelines for the backend and kind of managing the actual area itself from either a, a zoning perspective, um, from uses or up whatever. But at the same time as a, you know, village responsibility. It also does help. It's a planning tool that I know it, but like that helps with, you know, school, schools in theory with, with the county, with utility planning and certain things. Cause if we have some of these master plans in place and let's say the county maybe gets random funding for sewer or water extension, like, you know, we could, we, if we have a plan in place, those plans always help get some projects done quicker. I'm not necessarily quicker, but there's always, there's sometimes funding available when you have those plans in place as well as, uh, it's one less step you have to take when those projects arise.
Can, would they be able to help with like the tax overlay and figuring out that?
I can, I can try, I can figure that one out. Yeah.
Yeah. I guess, is it, all right. So to, for this particular purpose here, is this, this is something that should be done sooner than later? Is it in, in your opinion? Or is it possible to go to next year?
So.
I'm just looking at the money. I'm, you know, trying to find as many.
Yeah. So in all honesty, I wish this was something that we would have done two years ago, two, three years ago, that we had already in place. Once, once I started and we, you know, the form-based code was going through its process of getting adopted. I, I mean, I told council, I was like, I don't think a master plan would be needed. And that's because we do have interest from certain property owners and we still have that interest, but you know, it's kind of like, do we, it's, you're kind of creating this tool and this vision that does maybe encourage. When I say encourage development, I mean, encourage them to potentially jump on the horse quicker instead of, you know, keep, so it, it's really, it's also, like I said, I think, let me get more information. Yeah.
We should do it. If we're, if we're not going to do it, I don't think this is something we kick down the road. I think it's, we either do it or we don't do it.
Yeah. Because people are going to be coming as soon as we get through the UDO or maybe even before the UDO. If a developer thinks that the UDO isn't going to be more advantageous for them, they might start seeing plans before we even get that into place. So, uh, oh, go, go ahead, Wayne. Now you.
You spoke about lights, lighting, the street lighting and stuff. The village already like subdivisions, they said they want them. Like when my subdivision came, they said that what the chimneys had was the lights they wanted in that. And that was the, even the color, they didn't want the yellow buds. They wanted the bright white. And they would lay that out. I mean, that wouldn't, would be for everybody. You know, I don't know if it's a master plan or not, but you could tell them what type of lighting.
Well, that's what, yeah. I mean, that's the whole point would be consistency. Cause there's certain things you can put in an ordinance and there's certain things you can put in a plan. And you reference the plan and that's where you get that consistency.
I think this would also.
Can you do it without the plan though?
You can. It just, it, that the, it's harder to enforce as well as it's a lot on staff. Because you know, you're, you're either referencing like other previous approved projects in the heritage district, or you're kind of trying to, you know, go with the flow. Where if you have a common plan, it does take some of that, that weight off. Like, I mean, my shoulders as well as even council, planning board and stuff when they're reviewing these, um, proposals. Because that vision's already clear. And I think that's one thing I'm noticing with planning board, especially when it comes to the heritage district is you have seven different opinions. And they're all good. It's just, it's sometimes hard to kind of get them all on. Yes.
So you're trying to, uh, okay. So maybe, uh, maybe where I was going was, I think you're trying to narrow the scope of this master plan to basically the common areas more so than the entire district where we were trying to steer away from that. So maybe that's where I kind of got.
Oh, it's, it's going to be for the whole district, but let's just use streetlights for example. So.
So what I'm saying is like, we're not planning out the, the individual.
No, no, no.
That, that, that's what, that's what I'm trying to get at is that was what we were against before.
No, so. Because that's, that's one thing, a lot of that, like if you take our ordinance and you test it and you basically built, if all these properties were to be built out based off the ordinance, not saying that's what's going to happen, just just taking that, then we know, okay, how much, you know, yeah, like what each property, it kind of gives them a visual representation or an idea of what type of stormwater, um, mechanics they're going to have to have. As well as their access point or, or how, uh, you know, sewer and water extension. Um, so it takes all of that information where we already have it. It's not necessarily laying out each property and saying, this is what we, what's going to happen, but it will in theory be like, hey, you know, it might reference certain properties and be like recommendations on this. It's potentially to have, you know, an example, like venture store to have that 15,000 square foot building as an anchor building or whatever.
That's really what I was getting at is we're narrowing the scope from the broader to more of a, more of, of, of how to, and how the, how the, yeah. And how, how the common and the utilities and all that stuff kind of play together to make it more cohesive.
And that's why the number is so much lower because five years ago, we were talking over a hundred thousand.
Well, and I, that, that number is an estimate based off of some research of other master plan, RF, uh, RFPs I've seen. And that's where, yes, I think narrowing the scope to certain components of that. Cause we're not, we've already created the language. We've already got kind of the small area plan, like some of the land use techniques and goals and recommendations. So this, it's not, it's not starting from scratch. And I think if you were starting from scratch on this, it would a hundred percent probably be a whole lot more money.
Now, now that I understand it, I think that the, that the, the money there would probably be, be, it's probably going to be saved and get a better product. Like the, what would staff's time versus this thing? I think that we're offsetting the cost against staff time. And I think we'll end up with a better product. So I kind of feel like it's a, it's a good investment at this point. When, now that I understand where, where this focus is.
You will definitely get a better product out of this. It's just that I, I really like the idea of assessing the heritage district on an overlay or a special tax that, that, that can be reimbursed. Cause we're going to be putting out the money for this. It, because no, no individual right now, they, they may want to sit on their property and do nothing, but when it comes time to what needs to happen, there was a cost involved in that master plan and there's a way to recoup that.
And I, and if you were looking at any one of these potential developers, they would look at that $35,000 as nothing. You know, that would just be part of their cost of doing business, you know? A- 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 and I think we as a municipality have to kind of look at it that way. Because if there, there is the intent to do an overlay tax district at some point, we'll get $35,000 back in, 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 in no time. And also support the other services. We, we spoke about law enforcement earlier and law enforcement, you know, talked about how when you do have retail, part of that, you know, for the heritage district may mean we almost kind of dedicate more of the officer that kind of, you know, stays there to, to patrol that area as part of it. And that helps to, to free up our other officers where we might not add a full officer, you know?
Yeah. You're, in short, you're making an investment on this plan to help that vision and, and get that consistency in the long-term. And the return on investment is also going to be the investment in those properties and the increased tax values out of those properties. Um, and then that's just base tax. I'm not talking to, you know, municipal service tax district or something else, but you know, for example, like Mr. Fincher's property is, I think tax exempt right now because he's, uh, he's, it's agriculture. But you put commercial, I mean, you put some type of development on there. I mean, that's going to increase right there. So that's some of the return on investment. But what, what I will do is I'll get some examples and some information for you guys, uh, to I guess present at the, is it next April meeting or the April work session? Are we, when are we discussing CIP again?
At the budget meeting on the ninth.
The ninth. Okay. Yeah. I'll get you guys that information and give you a, just like a brief overview before, before that meeting.
I would just leave it on there for now and then we'll re, re, revisit it.
Sounds good. And then.
That's probably impossible because that agenda item is due next Tuesday. So.
Well, I'll, I'll have the information for the meeting is what I'm saying.
At the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay? Cause it'll, it'll already be on the agenda under the CIP and he can just bring the example. Is that okay?
Yeah. Yeah. That's fine. As long as it's fine with y'all.
Well, if the boss doesn't say so, I just want to make sure.
I mean, if we'll, we'll present the CIP just as we're amending it and he can bring the supporting documentation to the meeting, just not going to be in your agenda packets.
That's fine.
That works.
I'm fine with that. In, in essence of time, timing. Okay. All right. Next up, annexation. I think it's great. Oh, I thought it was yours.
It is, but I think this is more, I know we've all kind of talked about it.
Yeah. This is really, I mean, we, we keep hearing. Yeah, this is really, I mean, we, we keep hearing annex more property, annex more property. We've even heard from the public that we're not doing enough and I can assure you that staff has done.
We're not what?
We're not doing enough to try to annex people in.
We have done anything and everything in our power to do so. We, we have exhausted our efforts. We, we can't do anything further than what we've already done. So if, if you or the public feel that this is something that we need to continue going down and pursuing, we need to hire someone to help us out because we just, we can't do any.
I think if we get one neighborhood to annex from this consultant, it will pay for itself 10 times.
And we just threw this number out here. I don't even know if that's what, I don't even know who does this type of work. We have to do some research to figure out.
Yeah, I think it's worth it.
All right. I, I, I would actually, only because I've, I've, I've done this before. But, but I would recommend we spend the time and, and take like, you know, the next 12 months and maybe push this out one year and, and actually form a committee, uh, like has been done in the past in Marvin. To number one, understand the ordinance, but the ordinance is better because they have changed. Because you're, you're always looking at two routes. There's voluntary and there's statutory. It, you know, Marvin, to this point, none of the areas in Marvin have done statutorily. Everything that's been, that's in Marvin now has been done voluntarily. And, and I think that's a good way to start, but what we have created in order to protect all of the, the Union County residents kind of within our doughnut hole, i- is we've really created, um, a, a, an issue where there is inequity now between the people that are in Marvin and in the county. Be, and, and in both ways, because you know, we're contributing to schools, roads, things, all of the things that, that those folks use and utilize. So I, I, I think rather than just going straight to a consultant and spending that money out, I think we actually form an annexation committee of, you know, people that are interested in this topic. I've, I've heard from a number of people that I, I would think might even be part of that. And, and you know, at least kind of explore our options before we even go out to hire somebody. Because I don't think we, we know what we don't know yet.
Motion to approve John Bearis's testimony.
Really, really fast.
I'll second that.
We, really fast, we do have this on your agenda today as another topic, involuntary annexation. So we have, we have already been doing a lot of research on this, consulting with our attorney, reviewing the state statutes. So we cut, we already have been doing our homework on this.
With that being said, I have a hard stop in 24 minutes, so I won't be here probably for that discussion.
So John, I will join you in that group. Just, yeah, cause I'd like to get more involved in figuring out.
Well, and I think it's something we form with.
I think it, I think it's, I think it's fine. I think that if we want to form a committee, I think that's great. Or how about we call it a working group so that Austin doesn't have to take minutes? Um, put one more thing on his plate. I think we can form a working group, kind of like we did with the sports. Have residents sign up. Austin, if you can put together something.
I, I would also say we include non-residents.
Sure.
People that are within.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, um.
Let's ask, ask each community or volunteers.
Because some of this is going to be informing people whether they even know they're in Marvin or not, you know? That's, that's part of the process I think we have to go through before we start paying somebody.
From, from a standpoint of the C I P, we're going to push this down one year is, is what I'm hearing. We're going to work in the next 12 months to form this work group to have some recommendations and then we can have the same discussion.
Well, and I would say if we get six months down the road and we find that we, we can't do it, or eight months down the road, or nine months, or whatever, and we're like, okay, let's go ahead. I mean, we can pull that money. I mean, again, we don't have to.
We're beating our head against the wall.
Correct.
Okay. We, we, we understand our direction.
Okay.
All right. Next up is the Greenways Capital Project. Um, okay. So a couple of things before we get into this, um, everything that we've mentioned here today, we have always entertained those items in our, um, operational budget. The ones that you're getting ready to hear now are ones that we always consider in a capital project budget, two different budgets. We have for the longest time, before my time, had a capital project ordinance budget for greenways and trails. Up to last year, we pretty much wiped that entire account out. That's when I brought you all, um, some information that basically said, we don't have any more money for green, greenways and trails. We need to figure out how we're going to fund that in the future, if that's something you all, all want to consider doing. That, at that point in time, I say last year, it was probably two years ago. At that point in time, you all wanted to, to figure out how we could allocate some of the Powell bill dollars to green, to fund greenways and trails. And so that's, at that point is where we had some conversations about implementing the vehicle tag fee and kind of shuffling the money from, from Powell bill to start funding some greenways and trails. We have not spent any of the vehicle tag fees because we had the, um, we kind of had the operational understanding that we were going to take whatever dollar we earmarked, put that towards roads and then took that money from Powell bill and put it on greenways and trails because it's more, um, the, the language and the statutes are more flexible in Powell bill terms. So all that being said, nothing has been spent in that money. But here I am to, to tell you today that we have, as you've seen in the beginning of this meeting, taken that vehicle tag money and now earmarked it towards roads and have committed nearly every single penny of Powell bill dollars. So again, we're back to where we were two years ago. We have no money for greenways and trails. Um, I think we currently have a capital project budget of maybe $20,000, i- if that. Um, I don't have that exact number, but that's not going to get us anywhere. So I'm, I'm here to say that you have all these things in front of you today, but we have zero ability to pay for them.
Yeah. So, and, and reality is, is that what you just said, we've reallocated all those funds to go towards the roundabout. So I say, you know, at this point, all of those, just kick everything a year back and we'll reevaluate it again. And not that we necessarily will have money for it next year, but this year we know we definitely don't. And not that, and I don't want to lose sight of those projects because those, as you know, greenways and trails are a priority of mine. But I, I have to be a realist. If we can't afford to build them, we can't afford to build them. So.
Couple of exceptions I want to mention before we ultimately make that determination, which is essentially what I was going to recommend. Number one, you'll see the, in, in the C I P right now, it's called wetland. It really, we've changed the, we've changed the title to floodplain and wetland analysis. It's just basically, it's this determining, it's us taking a master plan doc, us taking an engineer and saying, hey, look at our greenway network, our greenway master plan, tell us where our problem areas are, and then let's come up with a plan to make this, make this work. So it's basically us getting an engineer to come in and assess our trail network per floodplain standards. Um, that's listed in here at $50,000. It may be more, it may be less. We won't know until we R F Q. Um, my recommendation is to at least keep that in. We have put that in the budget. Again, we don't have the, the funds to pay for it, so we will have to figure that out on our end. Um, but my suggestion is we keep that so that when we know into next year, into the next year, we know where we're going. So that'll be my recommendation on that one. And then the second item you see is S one A, which is a saddle avenue to Newtown. If I remember correctly, this is what we've referred to as the STIP grant, not the strap grant. And that is the project for the CRTPO sidewalk that we already have an agreement for. So we cannot pull out of that one. So my suggestion is to keep item number one and item number two in the plan.
So item number two, we're just talking about the, the $63,000. Now is, is that for, what, what's that specifically for versus the 260, 25 in the next two years outward?
Very similar to the roundabout discussions that we had earlier, phase one, planning and engineering, phase two, right of way acquisition, phase three, construction. The 262 is the construction built into two different years. And, and that, that may be pushed down the road just a little bit because we haven't even started our P and E. We're literally in negotiations right now with our engineer to, um, get those rates in that contract procured. Um, so we're a little behind the schedule on that one, but that's.
That's a loop, John. We gotta do that.
So, but one, but one thing, you know, that I've heard recently is the discussion about a potential roundabout at the end of Joe Carr and, oh, this is saddle.
Saddle.
Okay.
Saddle and end.
This is the other side of it off of.
Did I miss speaking any of that?
At the border at Innisbrook.
Gotcha. Okay. Understood. And, and that's why, because we're mostly down Waxall Marvin, it becomes so expensive. So you, so we're kind of already committed to that and, and, and are we getting? And what's the amount of the STIP that we're getting back after we spend that? Or is that just our portion?
Um, it's a 40, 60 split. I think we're on the hook for 60, 40.
So of that, 500, $600,000 total, is that our portion or is that?
This is our portion.
Seven million dollar grant total, correct? 1.7.
1.8. Can you come to the podium so people can hear? It's, um, but the, the, what you see in this capital improvement plan is our portion. It's not the reimbursable part.
Yeah. So the total grant proceeds is 1.8 million, I'm pretty sure. And then basically we will be, it's a reimbursable grant. So we'll be reimbursed. I think it was about 1.1 of that, um, for the project.
That's, that's completing the entire Marvin.
It's not completing. It will, it basically, it's sidewalk, sidewalk construction from basically preserve all the way through the village hall property down Newtown and then down Marvin Road to saddle. There's portions completed, the preserve of Golden Bell there off of Marvin Road. And part of the ZEPSEP approval was that they're going to construct their portion. So that does bring, I mean, some of those, um, costs down, but, but yes, basically it's to get it to saddle. Then to actually complete it, it would be from saddle to Wheatfield on Joe Carr.
Hunter, correct me if I'm wrong, but the totals that we have on the C I P are just what's left over after we deduct the $150,000 grant that Christina procured to put towards our matching obligation, correct? Cause the total obligation is like 524.
I can answer that. So I, I don't, I'm not looking at it off the top of my head, but the 150 grant that I've got from the legislator, we were going to earmark for phase one and two. I think phase one was projected around $98,000, if my memory serves me correct. Um, for planning and engineering is around $98,000. So we were going to use the grant for that portion and then the minor portion that's left out of, uh, out of, um, the second phase. Again, it may be, it may be 120,000. It may be 90,000. We, we really don't know. It's projected at 98. If my memory serves me correctly, which I think it does, um, and that's where we were going to use the 150 that, that we got from the legislator. So therefore to, to her point, the numbers are already reflected. What I just mentioned is already reflected in what you see in the C I P.
Yeah. Phase one engineering is basically our portion is 98,000. Phase two in, uh, right of way, I think was 64,000. And then the construction's like the 485, what I mean, or whatever that number is.
Bottom line, we keep, we've got to keep that 113,000 in there, but the other two items we can move to next year.
I don't know. I don't know what the engineering is.
So what, what he, what you're saying is we have to keep item number one, which is wetlands and, um, the floodplain analysis. And then the saddle avenue, which is $63,000. I don't know what that number equals.
113,000.
So yes.
So what is the engineering for 120,000?
So that engineering, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that, and part of this was geobine contingency, was to, since we already have contracted with Dewberry to do the engineering for the funded portion of the Marvin loop, to go ahead and have them, since they're mobilized, looking at the same area, to go ahead and do the engineering for saddle to Wheatfield.
Yeah. So I would push C four A, just slide everything down one block. And then engineering, just slide it down one block.
Okay. We can do that.
And then we'll revisit it. And then you're looking, I'm just going to jump ahead because in the essence of time, down to pedestrian refuges, refu- ref.
This is, that's just something that you all had put in your priority forms. It's something that we hear from the community a lot.
Push it down the line. Yep.
Yeah. Agreed.
Okay. And that's, that's all.
So you're going to bring this back to us all cleaned up and pretty?
Yep.
And then we'll look at.
How we fund it.
Yep.
Money, money.
Coming with council events.
All right. Sorry. One second here to pull it up. Bob and Jamie, get them all.
Jamie, Jamie gave me three dates he can do and he would like to sign up for.
First up is Thursday, April 11th.
Jamie, Jamie said he would like to do that one.
Thursday, April 11?
We've, we've pushed it off a week because of spring break next week.
What time is that?
10 to 11 a.m.
11 in the morning.
You see your screen in front of you? Oh.
Jamie and.
He's got all the dates and times listed for your convenience.
Jamie and Joe. Okay. Next. Yes. Next up is Tuesday, April 23rd, 6 to 7 p.m. Wayne and John. Next up is Thursday, May 2nd, 10 to 11 a.m. Bob's not here, you, so you can sign him up for something. Bob.
Well, I'll, I'll take the other half of it.
Bob and Wayne. Tuesday, May 28th. That is at 6 p.m. So Jamie. Jamie and Andy. Thursday, June 6th, 10 to 11 a.m.
Jamie said that he would like that one and I will also do that.
Jamie and Kim. Lastly, um, Tuesday, June 25th, that is at 6 p.m.
I, I can do that one, I guess.
Andy and.
I'll do it. John, whatever. Is it six to seven you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. The evening ones.
That's all. That's all for now.
All right. Next up, uh.
All right.
That's something that you all tabled. Uh, I think we heard from the public that they wanted a new community survey. We added that to the agenda in this previous meeting for y'all to discuss and we've tabled it. Is it something you all want us to put into the budget for next year? Cause. I have no clue. $5,000 maybe. It, 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 it costs, I, I remember it did cost around approximately 5,000 for COG to do it. But we also paid another one to 3,000 for these special mailers that had the one, one code postcard.
Where else? Yeah.
So let's just say 10,000.
So, um, a- again, garbage in, garbage out. If you don't get enough responses, how do you ensure yourself to get responses? They told us statistically that was a good response.
They, the, the COG told us it was statistically significant.
So, yeah, we gotta believe that, that, um, it's much changed and.
Yeah.
The thing about it.
That we need to do another survey.
You said how much the last one cost us? It cost us 20 million.
Well, in, in, in.
It's not a joke.
But here's the thing, right? So what we learned is, is that five years ago, we got results from a survey. It took us two years to be able to, to, to start working on a solution to get it done. Took three years to get that done. And then by the time we had the vote, um, we were, yeah, it no longer was relevant. So.
So what happened?
My, my.
So the survey back and it's the top three things are roads, pathways and parks.
Okay. But there, yeah, that's right. Exactly. But what are my, my point is, is this, is that the government moves at the speed of negative whatever, right? So by the time we get to that point again, have we wasted our time on a survey? Is it, is it relevant by the time we get the chance to react to it? Or is it, you know, is, is it worth it? I mean, because it, if it takes five years to get it to the point of making it a reality from a survey, and then the public has turned over in that five years and everybody has different priorities, is it really worth it?
I get your point, but I, I don't think it's ever like a waste of time to figure out what the community wants. Because even if we don't turn around and, or whoever wants to do whatever, when they're on council, turns around and does another bond. Well, we will just, it would just reinforce that they do want trails. They do want open space in a park. So then it would just kind of reinforce, well, if you still want these things, which you, the new survey shows that you did, then it's going to cost money. And as we've tried to already do it so that it was more economical, it's just going to, you know, cost more money with inflation and, and you're not going to be able to get it all done in a timely fashion. So I, I think that we've had a resident offer to help do the survey. Um, you know, maybe we schedule a meeting with. You know, maybe we schedule a meeting with maybe three council members in this resident and have have them come in and. Chat with them and see how they would, how they suggest doing it, because again, I I think that. I I think that when we were talking about doing a new survey, we said, well, we'll find out, you know, what the public really wants if the after the bond. You know, issuance or the bond, you know, vote. So, you know, that answer was, well, we don't want anything. Well. Is it that we really don't want anything or we just don't want to raise taxes or we really, you know, just don't want X versus Y, whatever it might be, so. You know, people keep saying we don't listen. Which is ridiculous, but so if if people want to tell us what they want, then I would I would I would. Expect that 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 the loudest people saying that. You know, these aren't things that we ever wanted and the survey isn't. You know, we we didn't take into account the survey or the survey was too old. That I would expect that that some of these people would would really, if we do a new survey, push it and make sure that their that their neighbors are filling out the survey. And and getting us more of a response than we got last time.
Well, the 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 controversy, though, always seems to come out from to how the questions are asked. And 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 that's going to be the challenge, because no matter how you ask the questions, some people are going to feel. One way or the other that they're skewed, right? And and it's coming from whatever their personal point of view is, you know? So that's what I'm not sure what we get by.
Well, I want to make sure to make the the record clear. I'm not saying that I don't want to listen to our constituents. I'm just.
What you said.
I want to make sure, uh but my point is is that by the time the turnaround, that's my that's my point. It's the turnaround behind the.
But if we. We get the results and the results say that we we love trails, we want more connectivity, whatever, then, okay. So now we know that trails are, you know, however much percent of whoever responded. So we're going to put more resources into trails and it may mean that we just raise taxes two or three cents in order to do trails. So when people then come back and it's not five years later, it's like, hey, we just did this survey, you know, six months ago and you guys said you wanted trails. So here's what here's how we're going to get the trails done.
Right, I and you know, maybe uh maybe we do. Yeah, I I because it that's that's the big thing. I think it was, I I think part of it is the the lapse between results and and. You know, action on it, because let's face it, people do move in and out of our community and and.
But but I but I am also with Joe. I I I think I think that the results are going to be really close to what they were before.
One important thing, though, I think is is the process too, and I think we did the right process the last time. Because I think using those pearls, the personal U R L, you can't just have an online survey where one house has thirty votes. You know, so there has to be a professional way, which which I was very glad we did in the past. And and the other thing is is that when we got the results from that survey, we had a number of public information meetings afterward. Where we had numbers of residents coming in and we had easels out and boards and then, you know. Pinning the tail on the donkey of what their priorities were. So I, you know, I I I'm not throwing away the process we did the last time. I I think that was the right way to do.
I agree. But we always ask our our residents to, if you've got, if you've got expertise in a certain area. Please please come and volunteer. So we've got a resident who's offering up their help. So Austin, if you can maybe set up a meeting and I'm happy to be in that meeting, um if anybody else, I think we should have three.
Because everybody's got their idea with them. What the vote said when on the bonds, what I take from it is they want all these things. They just don't want to pay for it.
Well, yeah, free is better than having to pay for it.
Well, I mean.
Or they want to pay for the things they want, but they don't want to pay for the other.
Not everybody wants it. They just don't want to pay for it.
So so Austin, if you can set that up. Yeah, I mean, whoever wants to be in there, I don't care. No, Andy, not Andy, somebody besides Andy. I mean, you look to me like, is that okay? Jokes, I got jokes today. And then, you know, we'll we'll see what their suggestions are and then we can bring that back to, you know, the next work session and and keep kind of trialing down this road. Because I'm I'm okay doing another survey.
Can we have him meet with two groups?
I thi- I think you're going to get, I think you're going to get the same type of feedback from the three of us versus if they're. Thing is going to get too muddy. We can bring it back to.
Well, and after that, you'll be bringing your conversation back to council to share anyway.
Word for word, I'll tape it. I'll tape it. Okay, so.
We're getting close to a cutoff time for Kim, which with the rest of these um items on there. I'd really like a full council to be discussing. What's coming up? So is there, do we do table this to the regular meeting and just push it off or do you?
How much have we got on the regular meeting?
Well, and 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 staff from staff, what what needs to happen? Is there anything that needs to happen today?
I mean, I I've got to go. I can't.
Number four is tabled. I've we we don't have enough information on that. Number five and unfinished, which is the engineering quote for the um. Marvin Creek Connector. I I haven't looked at this. I know we have a certain timeline if you guys are wanting to consider this. I know the H O A. Has sent a letter requesting the easement back if the project's not done in this year, which I've already alluded to the fact that it's not going to get done. We don't have the funding. So I don't know if y'all want to make a decision on that or how y'all want to proceed on that one.
Because I don't want to make a decision on it without Bob and Jamie here. And I'm I I literally have to go, so if you guys can dismiss me and you guys can figure out what else you want to table.
The only one I would say would be time sensitive.
Can somebody dismiss me? Can somebody dismiss me? I make a motion to let me go at one o'clock right now. Okay, all minor yeses then.
What did we need, Austin? The one about that we added today for Summerfield, that one is a bit time sensitive, so I would like to quite least have a little precursory discussion really fast. Yes.
So do we have to make a motion to move that up?
No, Joe, um under the rules procedure, Joe can call items out of order.
Yeah, we can move right to that. Which one is that?
New business number five.
New business number five, discussion of House Bill five proposed deannexation of nine seven nine hundred seventy three acres from the heart. Of the town of Summerfield, North Carolina.
I have a video for this if you want, or we can just get into the discussion. Essentially, the state legislature is very likely going to deannex. Almost a thousand acres from the very center of the town of Summerfield, which is located northwest Greensboro. They are asking for municipalities to pass resolutions to support their efforts to fight the deannexation. They have a very long, complicated history with a developer, a multi-year dispute over this issue. I have my only recommendation is that if we do a resolution to support the town, that we focus mainly on. The terrible precedent that um a deannexation of this size would set.
Do you know if they signed our, um when we asked, we reached out to all the communities when we were going through a deannexation, do you know if they?
That has been so long ago. I honestly don't know. I don't know if we asked every town in the state. I don't know if it was just something we sent on over listservs. I I'm not prepared to answer that question. From my standpoint, I'm I'm a hundred percent in agreement that we should sign a resolution against. Setting a precedent where the state is taking away the. Power of the municipality to to govern their their own zoning. I mean, because this is really what it is. It's an attack on. The municipality to zone their own town.
And they're starting big, nine hundred and seventy three acres.
I believe this is a, there has never been a deannexation of this size.
These all the town at that point, if it's in the heart of it, the biggest town.
Well, and it's it's totally against the character of the of the town and I'm sure that it's a hundred percent inconsistent with their landings. So therefore, it's something that is a, it it's a huge reversal of what. Summerfield stands for. I mean, they're the largest municipality in the state that is solely on uh well-inseptic, from what I understand, so. I mean, you take a almost thousand acre. Thing and stuff it in the middle of, you know, a town like that, that is so totally uncharacteristic and it's just, i- it's it's egregious. Do you all want to see the video I pulled up or we can delay that to another meeting if you'd like? We'll have this resolution at your April ninth meeting, totally up to you.
Yeah, and we'll probably talk about it and discuss it, so.
So I've already started writing that. You'll see that on April ninth.
Okay, um what else do we?
Let's see. Did Davey want to talk about um the Marvin Loop Trail Maintenance?
I can talk about that real fast.
Marvin Loop Trail.
So are we going to just procedurally go through and table these so that we know?
Yeah, so what where we did we left off at uh community survey, so. To quote requirement, we'll table that, correct?
So we're going to table number four and number five.
Number four and number five, uh Dewberry Engineering Survey, you don't need that yet, right? New business, Wax on Marvin Greenway.
This is something we left on there by mistake. We actually don't need this item anymore.
Alright, delete that. Uh discussion of involuntary annexation, we were probably just going to, we that can wait. We don't, I don't know if there's much more. I'd rather have the three other councilmen here for that.
It's a good discussion. You've got a very good memo in your packet if you want to go ahead and read that, but yes, we can push this to, do you want to push this to the April ninth regular meeting or to the work session? I would say work session.
Work session, because yeah, we'll probably have enough on the uh. And then fall sports programming, that can wait for the work session as well.
Let me just mention one thing real fast, because it it may not even be warranted to table. Um we we presented the same. Topic to you all probably four or five months ago and it's basically soccer and flag football. It's an additional cost that we would would be born to us. We did not budget for it. I want to say five to ten thousand dollars ish. Is that correct? Up more, more than that.
We don't have a park for it.
We do not. We would be renting Marvin um Marvin Elementary or trying to work something out with one of the H O As that we've been chatting with about. This, but again, it is something that we would have to do a fund balance preparation for because we don't have the funding. If we were going to start planning for fall sports, we really need to start doing it now. But again, it's not something that we've budgeted, so I think that the consensus that I've been hearing from the council is. We're we're not interested in that, but I just wanted to bring it back to y'all's attention and time and effort for us to actually prepare if y'all wanted it. But I I think I'm seeing and hearing, no.
I think we have to table.
I think elections have consequences.
We will table that for a discussion. In the fall, because it's going to be a year down the road from, it's going to be over a year down the road. It'll be next fall at that point.
Okay, so tabling that until fall.
So that group that meets, they'll stop meeting?
We have, we have stopped.
Discussion of Loop Trail Maintenance.
I'll I'll just mention this, we're going to table this one, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that. We've been looking at the trail um at Marvin Loop. We we know that there's water issues. We've been trying to deal with that for several several years. We've done everything that we can and it's it's just not helping. Um we're looking at a couple of different options with. Our engineers, we had them come out and assess what they think it is and there's all kinds of various reasons. I have asked our engineer to provide to us a study to figure out how we can reconcile the water that's. That's building up right by the school. Um but if you look at the photos that are in your agenda packet, the whole trail is kind of in. In some disarray that needs some maintenance attention and it's mostly crack ceiling that's needed. But because the cracks are so big and so long and so abundant throughout the trail, we did get a quote for. Complete repaving it, which is around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which again is not something that we've budgeted. It's not. Something that we have put into our road tracker system in that model that you saw earlier today, so it is something that we would have to find funding for. We're getting that proposal back from our engineer to figure out how to resolve the water issue before we move on to a recommendation on either crack ceiling. Or complete repaving.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm aware and it's been happening for a while and we've talked about some of this stuff, even when we were trying to remediate the flooding. Two years ago. No, I'm just saying when we were down there doing that and there are a couple of trees that are are close to the asphalt that are creating root upheaval. There does need to be some maintenance down there and and it's been an ongoing, you know, struggle with trying to figure out. How to get that water out. I have my own ideas about it. I've looked at it several times and I'm I'm. Actually anxiously awaiting, see what the engineer comes back with so that I can. Understand what that person is is seeing, so um I have a better understanding of it, but uh.
Well, and they're not, they're not going to provide, they're going to have to do a study. I mean, because the 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 school has a berm built up on their property to prevent. Some of the 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 stream runoff or the start not stream, storm runoff from Marvin Creek and the neighborhoods that. But that kind of area, a lot of the the property, the the water is just kind of flowing there. And it's not flowing on the school because they have that berm built up on their on their field, so we're kind of, our property is kind of absorbing all of that water, so. The the in they're going to have to do an engineering report to figure out what what's causing it and how to how it can be reconciled. So I'm sure that's not, I mean, it's it's going to be very similar to what we have seen with the water issues over here. Uh I will say.
Interested to see what what they come back with, so I can better understand what they're, you know, what they're saying.
Um I will say that um we're we're doing all we can to draw attention to any of tripping hazards that maybe there so folks can can see those. Um and we're, you know, doing all we can from a maintenance standpoint, but it is an issue that we wanted to bring to your attention because it is something that we want to address at some point. Uh once we figure out what's causing it, we can get down to the root, the root. Solution, basically, before we come back with an actual prescription of what we would recommend.
For the items that we have tabled, are we tabling them all to the work session except for the fall fall sports?
When is that next work work session?
It'd be April twenty fifth. And if we're pushing anything to the regular meeting or not. There's nothing time sensitive, so I think that that these are really work session items that we need to do in a work session.
You can you can table, if you guys are okay with us tabling unfinished number five. It it I know I don't have it on the agenda, but again, the H O A has requested that easement to be returned. That that kind of goes along with that, so I can put those two on the regular meeting.
We'll put that one to the regular meeting.
And just so folks that are listening at home, that H O A return letter is not in the agenda because I'd received. The request after the agenda was produced, so that's why it's not listed here. No one's trying to hide anything. It's just not listed because of the timing of. How the agendas are published.
Okay. We won't do open topics because we can save that. Review of action items.
Okay. Going to do an additional social media posts um to encourage people to schedule appointments with accounts on staff to gather feedback, ideas, questions. And the like. Christina and Jill are going to add the off-duty coverage for Bonds Grave Wax on Marvin to the budget. Um I'm going to create a sign up for an annexation group. More to be discussed on that later. I'm going to set up a meeting for Andy, Kim and Wayne to meet with the resident for the community survey. I'll be sending you all invites for your coffee with council events. Uh Christina is going to um. Execute the contract for the pavement condition survey with A M T as well as the audit contract. Christina and Jill are going to update the C I P as requested. And then we are tabling the various items to the, mostly to the work session. That's all I have.
Okay. Sorry. Are we going to review the mayor pro Kim list? I'm I'm looking at everything and all that. We, I mean, I can, we'll just do that at the regular meeting. Alright, want to do council comments? Anyone want to start, Wayne?
I'd just like to thank all the residents that are taking the initiative, whether it's um watching the the meetings and paying more attention online and. Also, uh the the great attendance that we've had at the last couple of coffee with councils. That feedback is critical for us, you know, as we continue to prioritize things moving forward. And um the people are doing a good job being respectful and uh I I think, you know, uh having good dialogue.
Andy? Okay, so I just want to, I want to read an email that I that I got um from Christina. I believe we all got it. And I want to preface this or read this. That I am in no way discouraging. Or saying shouldn't do. Anything, public has every right and I encourage if they feel they need. this information, they should do it. I just wanna bring to light that for the general public, what staff is dealing with at the moment, so that they understand why certain things get delayed and different things like that. So I will start. Good morning. I'm just letting you guys know that we are getting to the point where public records requests may warrant us to investigate funding additional staff to take over certain tasks. While we try not to let these requests affect operations, extremely difficult for that not to be the case. Sorry, where, when there are several back-to-back. We just finished one large file, a few smaller ones, but the one below is again going to require a lot of time for some of us to filter through emails again. This pattern continues. Unfortunately, there are things that we just simply are not able to do effectively in the day-to-day. And we'll need to consider hiring additional staff to handle daily operations that are being neglected due to resources spent on conducting and compiling searches on an ongoing basis. I know this is not what y'all wanna hear, but will ultimately affect taxpayers, but we are struggling effect to effectively meet expectations, public demands and our job requirements. So again, I'm not discouraging. I'm not saying that people should not do their, do right to investigate things. I just want the public to understand that right now, we have, the staff has a tremendous workload added to their normal workload. And it slows normal day-to-day processes down because of the extra workload. But I just wanted the public to be aware of where, where we are in this process. Um, and that's, that's really all. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was understanding and that people were not feeling like staff is neglecting anybody's particular needs or, you know, slow rolling anything or anything. They're just really bogged down at this point. So that was what I wanted to convey to the general public. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, so I'm gonna go and, uh, start with the um, issue that we've been noticing around. My wife runs almost every day and she's been noticing mailboxes open. So I talked to Ed about it and I said, oh, that's a postal, you, uh, post op, postmaster issue, not necessarily a local issue. And if you have anything, report you're missing or missing, but you don't know because you don't know what you're supposed to receive, nor did a letter that you sent out. So I'd encourage everyone who's mailing, still mailing live checks to drop those off at the actual post office and do that. But there was a number of mailboxes that were open. So, um, I did not only talk to Ed about that, but he said, that's where he directed me, but I also talked to the post person who sent me a really nice load. Her name's Beth. She does, I think, most of the mail here in, uh, Marvin. And, uh, she said she did report that issue to the, the postmaster. So hopefully they can find, I mean, if it's happening in late at night, we're not sure. Um, secondly, and this kinda goes into where getting the record straight. So, uh, of, of how things happen, I'd like to thank the sheriff's department for coming in. And again, I think we had to call them back again because of the information that was going back and forth and stuff. So it's, it's again a waste of our resources. And here, how much time did we spend with the sheriff department again? Which we're already here. It was well over an hour, which we could have got to a lot of these things. So again, we can't get to this stuff, but we wanna appreciate their time and get them taken care of. But because we had to call them in again, we are, we, we lost a lot of time in today just in their presentation or questions. And all they did was reiterate and basically setting the record straight for us, reiterate what we were told from the very get-go. So that being said, you know, it's, it's, you know, there, there's a lot of things that, that waste a lot of time and and, uh, um, e- efforts of staff. And it's unfortunate, we didn't get to all of the different discussion points that we'd like to. But we've taken care of that. We've tabled it or forwarded it to the next meeting. I appreciate you all coming in, staff. Thank you for that, um, uh, effort and, uh, uh, that you guys continue to do. And with that, I'll, we don't have a closed session. We'll just go in.
One, one quick thing, um, at least on inbound mail, there's a service that the, the US Postal Service does called Inform Delivery. And what it does is it takes scanned images of your mail as it gets sorted at the postal facility. And it sends that to you via email. So you can always know what should be in your mailbox.
Anytime I get something from the post office from an email or a text or something, I'm leery of that too, wondering if it's.
Well, you would go to, you would go to their actual website and sign up.
I'm one of those old people that actually did get scammed, you know, because, uh, it was from, uh, DirecTV. They, they called me and it said DirecTV. He knew everything about my account. And I'm like, oh yeah, that sounds great. Let's do it. And.
Yeah, what it is, is you just get an email each day and there's scanned images of what should be in your, your, your mailbox.
I, I thank Beth, our postmaster. I think she is the, our postal delivery person for most people. I appreciate her, uh, doing that. And with that, I'll need adjournment to, uh.
Did Wayne get a chance to counsel?
Yeah, he said he didn't wanna say anything.
To adjourn. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the, uh, council work session Thursday, March twenty-eighth at one nineteen PM.
All right. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's that? Oh yeah, I should've said, sorry, we didn't have that.
You did at the beginning.